Authorized by the Council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak for oral communications? Okay. And no one on Zoom?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. We can move to the closed session items.
Thank Your Honor. We have five items for the Council in closed session this evening. The first pursuant to Government Code Section 549 for 6.8, Counsel of Real Property Negotiator's property APN 302-110-032, Agency Negotiator John Lawless and Jason Reinauer, negotiating party City of Porterville and SV Farms LLC under negotiation terms and price. Item two, Government Code Section 549 for 7.6, Counsel of Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator John Lawless and Patrice Sildarth, employer organizations, Porterville Peace Officer Association and all unrepresented management employees. Item three, Government Code Section 549 for 6.95, liability claim, claimant Charles R. Edwards, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item four, Government Code Section 549 for 6.9, subsection D, subsection three, Counsel of Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation for cases in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. And item five, Government Code Section 549 for 6.9, subsection D, subsection four, Counsel of Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation initiation litigation, one case. Staffs report.
Okay. Thank you. We will move into closed session and reconvene at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, we'll reconvene from closed session. Is there anything to report?
An item A three claimed by Charles Edwards by a motion by Vice Mayor Flores seconded by Councilmember Carrillo in a five zero vote. That claim was denied.
Okay, thank you. At this time, please join us in the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Tate and remain standing for an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and give an invocation? If not, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. This brings us to oral communications. Actually, I wanted to note that we did have a presentation, but that has been eliminated from the agenda this evening. So that brings us to oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward for oral communications? Please, please come forward. And if you, and if you would, you can stand if you're, if you're waiting to get there, you can wait on, on the side and wait your turn.
My name is Ramon Figueroa.
I'm John Jones, Patrick Jones's father.
Good evening, Mayor Reyes and council members. We come before you tonight to say thank you. We continue to be so humbled by the continuous support of your city personnel and citizens of Porterville. The outpouring support amazes us each day. The most recently, we are so appreciative of the interest and support of placing the flagpole at Fire Station 71. When the Figueroa and Jones family realized there was not a flagpole at Station 71, we wanted to take it on as a project of two families coming together to honor our sons. Once some community members got wind of this, they came together to begin helping raise money to go toward the flagpole. This project is very dear to our hearts, and we'd like to thank you for your continued support. Our hope for this flagpole is to be able to place a reef each year on the anniversary of Ray and Patrick's last alarm. It will be a tradition that the siblings can continue to honor their brothers and later the children of Ray along with future generations. The flagpole could not have been possible without the support of you, the council, the citizens of Porterville, and most importantly, the fire department, especially Chief Lepierre and Battalion Chief Bullet for the legwork. When we initiated this proposal, we stated and continue to stand by covering any costs to the city. Once again, thank you, and our families will always be available to support the city of Porterville.
In addition to that, I think conceptually, not only we have a nice flagpole out there on the corner, but we also would like a monument that would, you know, deplict that, that we never forget what happened, you know, to two of our, or your guys' awesome firefighters. And I think it'd be a great tribute, and we, we've already raised quite a bit of money towards, towards the goal. So hopefully, hopefully that will continue and we'll have something. Our goal is to try to have this thing put together by the next anniversary, which is February 18th, 2022. Does anyone have any questions?
No, appreciate, appreciate you coming forward, and it's an honor to have you here, and hopefully this will honor the memory and be a blessing for the community to have this memorialized as it moves forward. So thank you for coming forward.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Antonia Griffith, and I have lived in the city of Porterville for all my 46 years of life. I have been employed for the state of California as a psychiatric technician for 21 years. I plan to retire soon while I'm still in good health. I am standing here today to propose on oncoming an entrepreneur by being considered to establish the third medical recreational cannabis dispensary for the city of Porterville. I'd like to thank you for giving me your time today, and may God bless you. I will continue to follow up and submit my application to do so. Do you have any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. A procedural question before we start, if you don't mind. There are three of us here tonight talking about the same issue, and rather than take nine minutes of your time, hoping that you might grant us just a little bit of latitude in case we go a shade over the three minutes.
Sure, yeah, please. Is that okay with council? Take a little bit more than three if there's... Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. Thank you so much for letting us talk today. My name is Dr. Massimo Sacki, and I'm a local chiropractor in town where I practiced for 17 years. And we are aware that the city council has one more cannabis dispensary license to award. My group and I would like to inform the council of our plans as we hope to be considered. Our group consists of myself. Again, I'm a local chiropractor in town at Omasackian Spine Care Center on Main Street. I also own Osteo Strong, and I also own 2.0 Coffee, all health and related businesses. Jim Carson, who has taught in Porterville for 30 years, currently is a professor at Porterville College. He also serves as a department chair, and he serves on many and numerous civic committees and currently sits on the Porterville Unified School Board. Eddie Patterson, a local businessman, also part owner of Osteo Strong and 2.0 Coffee Shop, also owns Venture Capital, a downtown business, and a local construction company. He's also been a part owner and consultant for one of the bigger cannabis dispensaries in Southern California since 2012. It is important for us to point out that the group that stands before you tonight is wholly local. We're all from Porterville. Our intent is to remodel and renovate the upstairs portion of 83 North Main Street where I currently practice and renovate that building to put our dispensary. We would also like to let the council know that we'd be the only doctor-owned facility in the area.
Thank you. The, the business name that we're proposing, if we are so granted, is Main Street Apothecary. Obviously, Main Street is important to this community, and revitalizing Main Street is one of our goals as well. One of our goals is to have a safe and welcoming type of a business. I want the type of business to where my elderly aunts feel comfortable in coming in. And basically, we want to create the gold standard of dispensaries in this area with the, just, we want to have one of the nicest facilities. Again, we are one of the few, I think, people that can tie our industry to the medical community, and Dr. Sacki is going to talk about that just a bit.
So we're in the middle of an opioid crisis in the country, and because of that, medications for many of our patients are not being able to be filled anymore. So pain medications, anti-inflammatory medications, muscle relaxers are not being prescribed at a rate in which they once were, for good or bad. But because of that, during this time, I have spoken to many other medical doctors in town about the alternative use of using cannabis or CBD to treat some of the conditions that walk into our office. So I feel like because of that, I not only have a link to, but I have a referral connection between myself and the medical community in which I think they would be very comfortable in referring their patients to somebody who has a medical background and be able to speak to them in manners in which they just won't be able to speak to or communicate with other dispensaries in town. In addition to that, at every location that I own in town, I do monthly talks at each of the locations. The monthly talks that I do are designed to educate the patients and the people of this community about the various things that I do at these various businesses that we do. And I feel like education is very important to be able to create the kind of facility and the location that we all intend to create.
Thanks again for letting us come tonight and present this to you. I would like to point out that the monies that would be used to build this facility is funds that would be coming from this community that's been made out of this community. And in addition to that, with your guidance, we would like you to guide us on the profits that we'd be making out of the dispensary, how it would fit to go back into the community. We feel like that we are locally owned and grown, and we want to give back to this community because obviously we've all done well here. Thank you.
In conclusion, I think that we offer the right mix of industry experience. I think we have a network of support through industry in Southern California. I think we've worked hard in our community to build integrity and reputation. And I think that our business would be a boost to downtown, and obviously, we want to have a stunning state-of-the-art facility that, that the town can be proud of. So we look forward to having an opportunity to give you a complete presentation, comprehensive presentation at some point in the future. So we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greg Shelton, 88 North Wilford Drive. Excuse me if I go a little long, too. I noticed on the agenda that we're going to talk about redoing the contract for the Chamber of Commerce. Now, it's interesting, as I was reading that, as I was around in those times, I've been around in politics for about 20 years now. And I remember when the 2006 contract was negotiated, and my recollection of the time was we were given about 20 grand to the Chamber of Commerce. And that one year, we gave them a $15,000 bump, almost doubled their, their stipend because the thinking was that we were going to apportion them some new duties. One of the duties was the Friday night music on Main Street. And I think the numbers bandied around were about $10,000, and I believe there was 12 or 13 concerts. So it worked out to about $800 a concert. In the end, it seemed like the city did most of the work. The city was city property, city paid for the electricity, it was city amplifiers. Parks and Leisure came out, set up the chairs. Parks and Leisure came out and took the chairs down. And then pretty much all the chamber did was book the bands and do a press release, which was free. And I remember talking to some of the bands, and I asked them what they got paid, and they said pretty much nothing. So it was 10 grand that was going into the chamber's coffers. Wasn't, I didn't think it was a very successful endeavor. And so after watching how we had, we decided to take over this last concert, I'm wondering now if $10,000 of their stipend was for those concerts, and they're not doing those concerts anymore. And it seems like the yearly amount should be reduced by the amount that was apportioned to that. To me, that's, I'm going to switch gears. And the second thing is it's a lot that TRDC. You know, I've, again, I've been on council before, and I've heard the same pitch from TRDC and from the local film board. And, you know, it seems like the only time I ever see him is when it's time to come and get the yearly, the yearly allotment. And, and, you know, it's funny, as 10 years ago, we did a study, I didn't vote for it, $30,000, to find out what we could do to help the business in Porterville, and it came up with three things. We're not on a, on a, on a highway, we don't have rail, and we don't have enough affordable and flexical commercial property. What's ironic, I see the same thing in this application. So it's like nothing's changed. Nothing, we still don't have this. So to give 25 or $35,000 to a group for these nebulous reasons that, you know, they claim that they were instrumental in a lot of these things, the Walmart, DC. And what I remember is it seemed like our former city manager, Mr. Huffaker, was the one that was instrumental in that. So I just feel like it's like we give money, and we promise we're going to do something for you this time, and, and nothing ever, you know, comes out of it. So I would wish we would take that money now. Please indulge me for a minute, if you'd mind. Maybe, in the old days, you needed that. You needed guys to go out and maybe cold call people. But today, for the amount, for the allotment we give the chamber and for the money we're going to give to the TRDC, we could hire a guy, and he could just do Facebook blasts, you know, he could do, he could give us TikTok, give us a channel. And we could probably, you know, accomplish the same thing that TRDC is doing for a lot cheaper and probably a lot better. So, you know, before we, you know, when I was on council, they'd excuse, well, we've always given it to them. We've always given it to them, Greg. Well, why? You know what I mean? Let's keep it, the money in town and quit just giving it away. And I'm going to finish with the last thing is this. It reminds me of the joke of a guy that says, listen, I'm here to sell you elephant attack insurance. I will sell you elephant attack insurance. And they say, well, that's silly. There's no elephant within 500 miles of here. He goes, see how good it works? Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward?
Hi, council. My name is Fred Beltran. I'm representing the Porterville Rescue Mission. The agenda 10, item number 10. And I just want to go over a few things. They're going to report to you on what the progress is. Got to remember, I don't know how many of you were around here. I know several of you, two, two years ago where we were and where we're at now. I mean, the place is just totally different. The progress we've been making, and also the fact that we're having to face this because of living conditions there. We're remodeling two bathrooms that interrupt our, our, our residents there with, with sleeping areas. And of course, the COVID has also caused us problems with, with timing and, and personnel. Contractors have told us they were going to help us, but because of COVID, they were afraid to come by. So we're not asking to waive any of the conditions that, that you have put on this conditional use permit. All we're asking is for time and patience to, to allow us to do what, what you've asked us to do. We have no government funding, and we get all this, what we're doing is through local donations. And so we have met a lot of the health and safety issues that you were concerned about. We're going to have a graduation this Saturday ceremony on, on the success stories of some of our residents. And of course, you guys are welcome to come. Let me know if you're interested to see, hear some of the testimony. Some of these guys have got jobs. One of them's going into the military. I mean, there's just so many stories and successful stories. And last but not least, I want to remind you, you have a sign up there that says, "In God We Trust," and that's what we do there. We do Bible studies every day of the week for everybody that comes in there. We feed the hungry, clothe the naked, shelter the homeless, and visit the sick and incarcerated. And that's, this is what our calling is, and we'll continue to do that. So please have some patience with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, I don't see any in the chambers. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Your Honor, there is no one on Zoom who is wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. And that brings a close to oral communications. That brings us to the AB 1234 reports. This is a time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to Government Code 53232.3. The first report is the Local Initiatives Navigation Center Committee meeting of August 4th. And is that Councilmember Tate?
It is, but I, Claudia Calderon is also...
Oh, is she going to give the report? Okay.
She can provide a...
Okay.
Yeah, in all fairness, it was Councilmember's first meeting, and introduced themselves, so. And introduced themselves, so.
Hello.
Hi.
Having trouble with my camera, but I think it finally came up. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting was held on August 4th, and there were several members, I'm not going to list everyone there, but there's a couple members from the City of Porterville, including city manager John Morris and Christina Tank. The minutes were then approved, the July 7th minutes were approved. Then there was a Porterville Welcome Center update. Nancy Boggs gave the committee an update on the Porterville Welcome Center. She announced that they would be able to process and birth certificates requested as they were able to get an order on site, which was a huge benefit to the clients. They continued to see 60 to 70 people daily for breakfast and lunch, and stated that dinner is provided to only the clients that are housed overnight. She also stated that there had been a county staff on site recently, as well as drug and counselors, drug and alcohol counselors to provide services and assistance. CISA has also indicated willingness to be onsite to help with employment services. And then Nancy spoke about city library staff assisting with onsite libraries, as there was an interest from the residents. Beravich also offered to contribute books to this project, and she will connect off-site to do that. Also, Laura Fisher asked when the possibility of allowing volunteers might open up, and Nancy said that that was up to the management, as they were still following the guidelines from the state. Then there was some mention of possible donations that could be given to them, like mattresses and other, and Nancy responded to each donation accordingly. Then there was a budget update presented by myself, establishing a carryover from last meeting, from the last year, Project Home Connect that is transferred to LINK. And I also explained the expenditures that we needed to create categories and establish a working budget for the fiscal year. There is also an update on the co-drive committee, subcommittee, and mention of when we should start that process. And there's a vacancy on the fundraising committee, and we talked about what could be done and how that subcommittee chair, if it remained vacant, how each, someone who would suggest a fundraiser would then take the lead for that fundraiser. Then we went on to hygiene kits and personal protective equipment. Laura provided. Tom with a brief description on how the hygiene kits were previously distributed. And then Tom stated that he would like to see a sample, so Nancy from the Welcome Center provided one. And Richard Osborne, representing Central California Family Crisis Center, said that he would also be willing to help. Then we went on to logistics, subcommittee, and there is an explanation that there was no need right now for logistics at the LINK committees, as Nancy's staff had it covered for now. Then we went on to outreach, and Laura gave follow-up that there may be a thing to take established, she and Nicole, another committee member, would connect outside of the meeting and then present that information. Then there was also some indication about bike services and whether there were enough supplies to provide that service, as they had invited a new community member to join the committee, as he provided bike services at a previous Project Homes Connect event. There were some other subcommittees that were not present, like the personnel services, and that was chaired for the next, tabled for the next meeting. There is an update on one-in-time survey that is completed annually, and KTHA that takes lead in that said that she will connect with the subcommittees' affairs to, you know, update them if that was going to take place, as you know, this year it did not take place due to COVID restrictions. And then also, the volunteer subcommittee was tabled to the next meeting, as those subcommittee chairs were not present. In other matters, Nancy from the Porterville Welcome Center said that she was in need of bottled water, as there was, you know, a shortage in those donations, and they, because of the heat, they've been giving out a lot of bottled water. And then I also reminded everyone that this is the time when we normally create wish lists for our annual event, but since this is an ongoing event now, that this is still a good time to create that wish list in case there's individuals from the community that started reaching out, as they're used to reaching out in September, to the city and the committee members about any needed items for that annual event that transformed into this LINK committee. And the meeting adjourned at 3:56 PM, and our next meeting is scheduled for September 1st, 2021, and I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear.
I said a comment, perhaps. I really admire your enthusiasm and dedication towards this group. It's multifaceted. There really seems to be something for everyone, and I think recruiting volunteers is something that I saw a lot of vacancies, and fundraising. And then you mentioned something about barbers and hairstylists, that we need volunteers for that as well. So that's about the only thing I can think of that you didn't cover specifically. And then the idea that if we come up with a fundraiser, we own it as far as sharing it, so that was really nice. So thank you so much.
Thank you for the additional information.
Okay, thank you. The next report is the Eastern Thule Groundwater Sustainability Agency meeting of August 5th. Just a few things to report. Of course, the minutes were approved, as well as the bills and warrants that were presented to the group. Action items that took place at the meeting was, there was an amended agreement between Terrabilla Irrigation District for Employment Services that was approved, as well as a discussion on the groundwater extraction fee and invoicing, which the board did direct those invoices to go out in August. And I believe that's all for the action that took place at that meeting. It's still an ongoing process to get folks onboard and registered and using the water accounts and just the general awareness and outreach. Outreach is a constant on the agenda. So we're still definitely in the mix for agreements with the city and the community areas, the management areas. So look forward to bringing more information on that group in the future, unless there's any questions. Okay, so we'll move on to the next report, which is for the Library Planning Committee meeting of August 5th, as well as meeting of August 12th.
Thank you, mayor. I will give both reports on that. So the Library Facility Planning Committee met on August 5th at 4:30 PM. Library Program Review was the only item on the agenda that evening. The library consultant, Penny Hummel, thoroughly reviewed with the committee the Porterville Public Library Program. Let me see here. The recommended total gross square feet at 70% efficiency for a new library is 39,690. Main sections of the program include adult services, youth services, meeting areas, staff areas, support areas, lobby, cafe, service desk, restrooms, business center, family space, quiet reading area, adult learning center, teen space, creation space, media lab, learning kitchen, and various meeting and study rooms, an outside garden, and a vendor area. Detailed descriptions of what is to go in each segmented area, along with quantity, unit, and square footage, is listed throughout that program. And a lot of these details were covered at that meeting. It was very extensive. Hummel followed going over the program by sharing some market segmentation data for Porterville, which will be included in the final needs assessment. That meeting adjourned at 5:45. Are there any questions on the first portion for the first evening? Okay, I'll move into the second meeting. So the committee also met on August 12th, 4:30 PM. First on the agenda, Susan Jones, library manager, conducted a virtual tour of the Billie Jean King Long Beach Public Library. This library is 93,500 square feet building that had a projected cost of 60 million, a project cost, excuse me, of 60 million. Its capacity is 2,393 visitors. It seats 364, has 92 computers, and 280,000 volumes. A few of the features of the building included a lot of natural light, outside seating, multiple maker spaces, multiple teen and kid areas, a family learning center and meeting rooms. The adjacent property has a park that is under development. Next, the consultant, Penny Hummel, previewed the library services and facility needs assessment presentation that will be given to city council tonight. Consultant Carson Block picked up where Hummel left off and provided the technology assessment. So the last item on the agenda for that evening was committee member Cervantes briefed the committee on the current library services. Staff has completed a state survey regarding designing, funding guidelines, and eligibility criteria for the California State Library's 439 million in one-time funds to create an equity-focused grant program administered by the state library to support life, safety, and critical maintenance in facility projects. More information will be coming on that topic in a few months. Walmart donated and delivered over 750 new books. Another item Cervantes covered was the virtual summer program ran from June 7th through July 31st and had 79 participants. Staff also placed a flyer in the PUSD parent handbook with online resources, as they do annually. They also put an ad in the recorder. That evening, the meeting adjourned at 6:26 PM. And that concludes my report for the library planning.
Okay. Any additional questions for Councilmember Carrillo? Okay, thank you for the report. The next report is for the City Council Water Ad Hoc Committee meeting of August 6th.
I'll start that. So myself and Councilmember Tate met at the city's corporate yard on Prospect Street. We met at 12:30, so we started with lunch and got an overview. We were greeted by our public works director, Michael Knight, and some staff members. They provided a tour of the corporate yard facilities. And then we received a presentation on the operations from Mr. Knight about the laboratory, the maintenance shop, refuse, sewer, streets, transit, wastewater treatment, and we talked about water a lot. And then we toured the corporate yard by vehicle. We toured the wastewater treatment facility by foot. And then we traveled to the Olive Avenue Thule River to tour the city's newest well. We concluded that day around 4:00 PM. That was our agenda for the day. We pretty much stuck to that. We did get a lot of introductions of different staff members. We got to visually see a lot of projects that have been accomplished and some in progress. I want to thank the city manager and Michael Knight for establishing that for us, because I think when you get to visually see something, it helps with the decisions that we make. A lot of things were pointed out, the process and those things being developed, the time and the planning, and also the cost of all those items, and how that benefits the city, you know? And I think hearing about the water, I think our most essential service that we have. So seeing all the work that's done, all the professionals that work there, and the experience, the time they've been in those positions and moved up, you know, felt really good. I think another big thing we got to see was the electrification of the transits, and talked about that and even progressing forward. We got to walk through the office to see the gentleman working on the computers, where you could see where they control the wells. They watched those from around the city and can tell when, you know, there's a disturbance or they need to shut it off and explain that process. I just thought it was very eye-opening. I'm very grateful to have gotten that time, and it felt like it flew by. But I didn't know, I wanted to give Councilmember Tate opportunity to add anything. There was so much that day, too. We packed in a lot of information.
It turns out it was probably one of the most interesting tours I've ever been on. People there really know what they're talking about. If you were to combine all their years of experience, it would be in the decades. I also realize now, since, you know, that's like my neighborhood, that's my area where I live, and I drive by there all the time. And I used to take the trail, you know, around Veterans Park and try to peek in through there, through the fence. And some of their future plans, things that they're going to do, is, I think it's going to include more public awareness. And if anything is off, you were talking about the whole process and how they monitor, it's an ongoing thing, what they have to do. If it's not in perfect unison, the whole system could be corrupted, and then this city would really be in trouble. And so, and it goes 24/7. They work long hours, they're just very dedicated to what they do, and I really admire them. So, I mean, that's just, I'd go again. If you asked me to do it next week, I'd be there again, because it was that interesting, and there's always something new. So, thank you.
Thank you. Definitely a very interesting subject matter out there and an essential part of what happens in the city. So thank you for the report. Are there any questions? No? Okay. That brings us to the Tulare County Water Commission meeting, which I believe was canceled.
Yes, it was, mayor. Nothing to report.
Okay. And we have the City Council COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee meeting from August 10th. Do you want to give the report, Councilmember Carrillo?
I'll let you. I have my notes, so I'll see you.
Okay. Well, I know that we had gone over quite a lengthy list presented to us from Parks and Leisure, the activities, proposed activities, with questions on guidance for how we should proceed with those activities, if we should proceed, and in which fashion. So there was, we had considered the corporate games and had some suggestions on how that might still be able to be held. And of course, this is all if there's not a drastic change in the recommendations that are out there. Some questions about book sales for the Friends of the Library and scheduling of that. One of the other, before the pandemic, one of the other popular activities was a senior dance and discussions on how we could continue to move forward with that. And I think that we had arrived at some benchmarks to make before we went back at scheduling that, but that looks to be something we're projecting to look into again. The volleyball league, as well as Family Literacy Day and scheduling of that, and precautions that need to be taken, and adjustments, should they need to be made. One of the ones that was difficult to, you know, look so far forward to was Pioneer Days, an event that happens on the 23rd of October, which requires a lot of pre-planning. So that was something that was... So, that was something that was in question, as well as some youth activities and sports that are happening late fall and winter where it's too, a little too far out to make a determination for. We also had one question, there was someone that wanted to do an activity at one of the public facilities later on in the wintertime, that there was some questions about the logistics of how it would work. And so, that's an ongoing conversation that we look to have, and I don't know if you want to add any more to. I went through it briefly, but I see you've got pages of notes, so.
Yeah. The only thing additional I had was Chief Lapierre had talked about the 20-year memorial for 9/11.
That's right.
Working on that.
That's right. There were some plans and suggestions on how to make that the most memorable experience that we could have with, given some limitations, and how we would go about paying tribute to that anniversary and memorializing that effectively and probably using our own staff and Honor Guard to move that forward. So, that's something I look forward to participate in September.
I think you covered it.
Okay. Did I leave anything out, Mr. Lawless?
There's been a proposal potentially to do a Christmas Bazaar, Christmas event, proposed out at the sports complex that was reviewed as a, so, some preliminary review of that proposed was provided.
And we did also discuss the potential of bounce houses returning to public parks and have, hope to have more discussion on that as we move forward. Any other questions from Council? Okay. And that was one of our first COVID-ad hoc meetings for a little while, so hopefully we won't pick up the pace too drastically, but we will if we need to. So, the next report will be for the Local Initiatives Navigation Center Link Services Event on the 11th of August.
Thank you, Mayor. I dropped in on Wednesday, the 11th, at the Porterville Welcome Center, and I immediately went to speak to Nancy Pallifox, the Turning Point Director in Porterville, to let her know that I was there and that I would be walking to introduce myself to the organization representatives, just to speak to them. In a brief conversation that I had with her, she shared what Claudia Calderon shared previously in her report, that they were currently reaching out to organizations, that they were having bottled water shortage. In the heat, when the clients come in, they are given two bottled waters, but right now, that's been something that they're pursuing. On this day that I dropped in and attended, the Kings to Larry Homeless Alliance, members of the newly formed County Outreach Program, the County Eligibility Worker, Kingsview Porterville Wellness Center, because of the closeness of the name, it is sometimes confused with the Porterville Welcome Center. Then, there are Mental Health Services, Anthem Blue, the Notary, and the Client Service Representatives to assist with CalFresh, et cetera. The young lady from the Kings to Larry Homeless Alliance was doing the client intake. The next table were the members of the County Outreach Program, who shared that they are fairly new and they will soon be reaching out to assist clients and organizations with services that are available, in particular, to funding that will be dispersed. I spoke to, I went by the Eligibility Worker who was with the client. The young man that was representing the Wellness Center brought information that is available through their organization. It was nice to speak to the mental health representatives that were there. They had just finished working with the client, they had taken all the information. The Anthem Blue representative that was present shared the mobile telephone information and free assistance services to the clients through the app they offer. The Notary is there weekly inside the Welcome Center, and due to the confidentiality of his work, he told me that he has helped several clients, in particular, to obtain their birth certificates and other documents, correspondence that may be necessary, to help him through the navigation of the system in paperwork. Speaking to each one at each of the stations, I personally thank them for their commitment to help and assist the homeless population. Over time, you have heard me report the work, the dialogue and discussions that have been brought and taken to the table. There have been numerous discussions, and these services, to be able to have them at the Navigation Center, the Welcome Center, have been a lot of hurdles, but I'm very grateful to the staff that began the discussions and the dialogue to, I want to say, a few years back, and did the traveling and did the work and brought back the information so that we could pursue the Navigation Center and make that commitment so that the services can be provided. Porterville has taken many strides, and again, it makes me happy that we are the first that is operational in Tulare County. On a side note, right before I came to the meeting, I received an email, and I have the official name of the outreach program. It is the Tulare County Homeless Multidisciplinary Team, and being thanked to see that we are invested in the community and outreach events. Just wanted to provide the contact information and to share events, community, and they will, that they may be able to be present around Porterville and to let them know. But they did follow up after I had visited with that information. So, I want to thank Mr. Lawless for letting me know of the event to that regard. It was nice to visibly see and physically be there to talk to the representatives.
And as Ms. Calderon reported, this will be in every other week. Instead of a one-time a year, the Navigation Center provides for this opportunity and services to be provided on an every-other-week basis as that one, as that singular day a year used to be provided.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to the California League of Cities Homelessness Roundtable.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the other person that was virtually was Mr. Ridenarrow, who was in attendance also.
Actually, that was Ms. Calderon. With my login, I was in a T-CAG meeting. I apologize.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that. I knew there was someone virtually from the city. Well, thank you so much. That was held on August 12th. Homelessness continues to be one of the largest crises that is facing cities. New funding is being made available from both the state and federal levels, and the emphasis is to encourage the cities to collaborate on the best uses of that funding. The discussion topics were to have included, how are the cities using state and federal funding to address homelessness? What lessons are being learned in this process? How can city leaders effectively collaborate with other governmental agencies and the private sector on reducing homelessness? Presented was Helen Schneider, who was a Santa Barbara former mayor and now works for USICH, which stands for United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. She referenced in her presentation the latest national snapshot, which was the point-in-time count of January 2020. On a single night, approximately 580,466 people were experiencing homelessness in the United States. According to the 2020 information, states with the highest and lowest percentages of people experiencing homelessness who were unsheltered, California was ranked one of the highest at 70.4%. In that percentage, 161,548 were homeless, and 113,660 were unsheltered. Please remember that these numbers are from January 2020 point-in-time count. She went over their statutory and authority mission, and it goes back to coordinating federal response with the council, interagency working groups included, for example, the Department of Housing, Veterans Affairs, Labor, USDA, Homeland Security, Transportation, Social Security, et cetera, and others, and performance measure and accountability. Her region covered California and Arizona. The partnerships include regional and state interagency councils, governors, mayors, county-elected leaders, faith-based and nonprofit organization. That was the introduction of the facilitator, and it was then open for comment and questions. Scenarios that were given, for example, the city of Malibu, which is a smaller city, they indicated they could not get concrete help from the county, that they were listening in in their own town, it was a fire danger, and they would like to grasp at some of the funding, they're struggling to find a way. And with Washington DC, the level of funding that would be coming in, and the response was to contact and work with the continuum of care that work on homelessness, work with the county, and interact with each other. Another city, City of Concord, just highlighted that they have had council discussions, that they have had staff person mitigating homelessness. The position is a position that they had, but it had not been filled. They had already, they already have most all of the services, and that city staff are getting more and more involved. The recommendation is that they put a plan, short-term, long-term, and not reactionary. I believe they said it was Smokey Grass Valley. They stated that they had a police officer dedicated to the homeless shelter. They are the only shelter for the western Nevada county. Homeless are not from the outside, they are from the area. The shelter used to be overnight. The city has stepped up, it has been the will of the city council and the community. What is working, what was not working, they reference substance abuse pets, et cetera. The concern is the next wave of homelessness, and they made reference to the elderly who don't have a place. With regard to the eviction moratorium, the response is there are billions of dollars for tenants and landlords connecting for senior services in that component. PD and Fire are not always a social service component partner with experts who can assist. Other cities made reference to heap funding, they were instructed to work with nonprofit and service providers, housing and authority commissioners prioritizing landlords. There was one city that indicated that they had received, that they were a 13,000 population, and they had a challenge, and it was a tension between cities and counties, and it's been a push-pull. He made reference to a phone call that he had received on December from a close area, and it was somebody who wanted to buy a hotel. They needed to spend the stimulus money, they wanted to purchase a hotel and turn it into a homeless shelter. It was the will of their city council that came to fruition, and they wanted to know how they could not leave the city behind with this commitment. And it was, not consensus, but the response was, through COVID relief funds, infrastructure, how to blend federal and state fund documents, and coming out soon. They stated that there is going to be a Home Key 2.0 with services provided. It could go on, one hour is not enough to listen to all of the conversations, and that pretty much concludes the report.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
I have one quick one.
Sure.
Did they talk much about that Home Key 2.0?
No, that is coming out. That is something new. The Home Key 2.0, it was announced that that is something to look forward, not forward, way forward to coming out, but it is not yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then, next is the Tulare County Association of Governments Meeting from August 16th.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this one short. We met yesterday. It was a virtual Zoom teleconference meeting. Those who wish to attend in person or virtual had the option. The transportation consent calendar, there was only one action item. It was the adoption of a resolution for state of good repair project list. The other informations, it was informational. The transportation consent calendar was unanimously approved. Under the transportation action discussion items, there was a presentation, and it was in regard to the Tulare County Bridge Program. I want to state that during this presentation, I was disconnected at least four times, so I will do my best to present this portion. The presentation was focused on that there are 359 bridges in Tulare County, and that most of them were 50 years old. We were provided with a PowerPoint presentation, and it had to do with the Highway Bridge Program and some of the recent changes. With the programming procedures, there is this annual statewide allocation of 289 million, construction cost increase every year, new projects on the project prioritization list. The PPL is published every two years, ranking bridges statewide using prioritization criteria. And the ranking on the PPL on this list will dictate the project funding. There is always something new to be learned. The current program status is that the last project received design funds was in 2019. New project funding is not expected until 2023. The focus on closing out state and high-cost projects, prioritize funding of advanced construction projects, they are 19 years of backlog projects, projects that are awaiting the funding, and that the programmers are working to reduce backlog to 15 years. They spoke of the programming changes and impact, the new programming policies, the future of the program, and under the following categories, a number of bridges, eligible replacement projects, there are 21. Currently in design, there are 11. New structure, 10 years old, 11. BPMP eligible, 91. Fair condition, there are 225 bridges, which are the total of the 359 bridges. The currently programmed bridges are the 11. The program cost summary provided the dollar amount above. Bridge summary, the bridge program summary, the goals and the expectations. Within the next six years, advanced remaining bridges in design to construction, 19 additional projects started within the next 10 years, emphasis on funding needed, locally funded bridges under 20 feet, continue the routine inspections, secure funding, design and construct standalone projects within the next three years, secure additional funding for all required work items. The rest of the items are informational, there is nothing to report for Caltrans. Under the association consent calendar, there were nine items of action, and the only thing I'm going to state for the record, that the minutes of June 28, T-CAG Board Meeting, were approved, and the minutes of the June 24, 2021 Technical Advisory Committee Meeting. Under the authority action discussion, it pleases me that there was one item of action that pertains to Porterville and a couple of other cities. The result, it was a resolution for the adoption of 2020 Measure R Strategic Work Plan, Amendment Number Three. With regard to the Porterville area, this reaffirms funding for the Porterville Litter Abatement Pilot Program for the State Route 190 Corridor Improvement Funding, and for the city of Porterville for the Elderwood and Putnam Project with the Strategic Work Plan. That concludes my report. The next meeting is Monday, September 20th.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for the report. And the final report, let me see, yep, would be the Tulare County Regional Transit Agency Meeting of August 16th. Five items to report, five action items. Five items to report, five action items to report. First item was the approval of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 State of Good Repair Project. There's funding, federal funding available for the transit agency to acquire electric vans or vehicles for on-demand services. As you know, in Porterville, we've had these services for some time, which have been successful. And that was also reported out to the transit agency. And so there's a desire to start that process. So this item was approved. And a part of that is that the city of Porterville will be applying on behalf of the Regional Transit Agency as the transit agency is still in the process of becoming an approved, approved to receive money through the federal government and federal funding. So the city of Porterville was asked to apply on behalf of the Regional Transit Agency. The next item, there was an amendment to the budget that had been previously approved. There were a few changes that were looked at. Mostly, there was a decrease in the anticipated salaries for employees of about $21,000 and an increase in the benefits. There was an increase in office expenses, chiefly furniture and supplies and computer equipment of about $29,000. There was a decrease in publication induced legal notices of about $8,000. There's a decrease in rents and leases of about $8,000. And some professional specialized expenses were decreased by about $100. So this was also approved. There was also, there was an item brought to us that is geared towards the reopening of transit. Especially with the COVID-19 pandemic, there had been some effects on transit. So the federal government, I believe, is, and actually the FTA has taken on a project to declare transit open. America's open and transit's open. So hopefully that stays that way for as long as it can be. There were 10 steps that they had given agencies to try to apply this philosophy with the website and social media, returning to normal operational status, which there, there was an ask of us to return one of our routes to what had been, what had been formerly without an abbreviation of that route. Free, fare free for all. That's part of getting people on, onboard and getting, increasing ridership is to make the fee free. Enhance fleet and facilities cleaning. Next generation fare payment system, although there's not a cross-the-board system in the county. There's ways to look at what that will look like when the free fares are not happening anymore and how to unify the payment system for transit throughout the county. Real-time transit information, visual indicators onboard the buses. Community outreach, keeping awareness of what's happening with the transit agency and the benefits it's bringing to the county at the forefront of the minds of passengers, as well as healthy, a healthy workforce, which means keeping those, those drivers and all the employees and mechanics healthy and working and innovative mobility and improve route design. So those are, those are the 10 steps to renew ridership. So we'll, those were approved after the discussion. So we'll see how, how well we can improve that ridership. There was an action to approve a resolution for the areas of persistent poverty grant application. This is a grant application for planning purposes for census tracts that are prone to being persistently, I guess, in poverty. 75% of the census tracts within the, within the agency's area are eligible. And this was again, another instance where the city was asked to apply on behalf of the transit agency with its relation, relationship through the federal application portal that can request that money and to, to be able to receive that money and have the TCRTA act as a subrecipient. The final action item was to consolidate the subcommittees. Previously, we had had an executive search committee. We had a finance committee, a policy committee, and a technical operations committee, which had long staggered meetings because different people were on each committee. With the executive director's search seemingly over with, we were able to eliminate that committee and consolidate the other three and have five of us that will sit on a consolidated subcommittee, which I still volunteered to serve on. So save us a little bit of time and hopefully streamline the subcommittee, which in all honesty is almost like a whole nother board. But in the formation of something so important as a regional transit agency, I think it's, it's worth putting in the, the time in the beginning, especially considering all the effort ahead of the formation that the, the city had made in great strides in transit. So look forward to keep working on that. So are there any questions about that meeting? Okay. So that concludes the AB 1234 reports. The staff reports were included in the packet. Are there any questions for staff? Or does staff have any, any highlights of those reports that they wanted to mention? Okay. So that brings us to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
Mayor, I just wanted to note two conflicts for myself for item number one and item number two.
Okay.
So I want to abstain from those two votes.
Okay. So we'll note those abstentions.
Mayor?
Yes?
With the noted abstentions and conflict on one and two, I make the motion that we accept the consent calendar items one through eight.
Six?
No. Oh, I apologize. I was, I turned the page, one through six. Thank you. That's the motion I'm making.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by council member Tate. We will go ahead and call for the vote.
Council member Tate?
Oh, voice vote since Milt's on the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Council member Carrillo?
Aye.
Council member Stowe?
Aye.
Vice mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Rees?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. That brings us to the public hearings, of which we have two tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. As stated, there are two public hearings that have been scheduled. The first to consider or consideration of the Butterfield Stage Corridor mitigated negative declaration. And with that, Mr. Right now, we'll provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, honorable mayor and city council. The city of Porterville is proposing to develop a non-motorized transportation facility known as the Butterfield Stage Corridor to provide safe, improved access to education, retail opportunities, job centers, housing, and the transit center. The Butterfield Stage Corridor, we utilize approximately nine miles of the city-owned former Union Pacific railroad right-of-way between Teapot Dome Avenue to the south and Avenue 196 and Strathmore to the north. The project will consist of a Class 1 12-foot paved, non-motorized, multi-use path that will, that within city limits will include amenities such as solar lighting, drought-tolerant landscaping, drinking water stations, refuse receptacles, benches, wayfinding, and controlled lighted crossings. Portions of the path that are outside the city limits would still include the following amenities: solar lighting, drought-tolerant landscaping, and trash receptacles. The path will meander through the width of the right-of-way in a manner best suited to avoid irregularities, irregularities of grade and to provide space for the amenities. The project will facilitate the achievement of the General Plan Implementation Policy, PSCF-I-14, to develop a safe and efficient trail network throughout the city that links parks and other key city destinations. On March 24, 2021, the California Transportation Commission adopted the 2021 Active Transportation Program, also known as ATP, for statewide and small urban rural components with Resolution G 2130, which included $7.1 million for the development of the first phase of the Butterfield Stage Corridor that encompasses the Class 1 non-motorized, multi-use path with amenities between College Avenue to the south and West North Grand to the north. City staff have been working with Tulare County Association of Governments, known as TCAG, staff on funding options to develop a segment of the path between West North Grand and Avenue 196. On July 15, the environmental coordinator made a preliminary determination that a mitigated negative declaration would be appropriate for the project. Mitigation measures were identified for biological resources, cultural resources, hazards, and hazardous materials and tribal cultural resources. The initial study has been transmitted to state clearinghouse. It will ask to interested agencies, groups, and individuals to review and comment. Their review period ran for 30 days from July 16 through August 16, 2021, at the time of writing the staff report. And now, one comment letter has been received from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, which is attached to the staff report. In light of the comment letter received from the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, the staff recommends that the city council open a public hearing to receive comments regarding the project and to continue the public hearing to October the 5, 2021, after receiving comments, to provide an opportunity to work with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District in regards to the comments received. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. So we will open the public hearing at 7:53 PM. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak about this item? I don't see anyone in the chamber. Is there anyone with their hand raised on Zoom?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. And then we're, we leave it, just leave the public hearing open?
Yeah, I recommend that you keep it, you can open it, keep the public hearing open and continue the matter to October 5.
Okay. So then it's back to us to act accordingly.
Correct.
Correct, as we continue to engage the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District in regards to their correspondence. And if anybody needs any light reading, there's a 1,200-page document in the, in the office, if they would like.
You know what, just since this is a public hearing item and it's an environmental item, can we go ahead and have a motion to continue the public hearing to October 5?
Mayor, I make the motion that we continue the hearing to October the 5.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call the roll call vote.
Council member Tate?
Aye.
Council member Carrillo?
Aye.
Council member Stowe?
Aye.
Vice mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Rees?
Aye. Okay, passes 5-0. Will be continued. Thank you. That brings us to the next public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our second public hearing this evening was a consideration of annual adjustment of fees by application of the Engineering News Record Cost Index. Mr. Sanchez will provide that staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawless, mayor, members of council. In accordance with prior city council authorization, staff calculates and adjusts all of the attached fees annually. The policy as of 2003 is to provide council notice of all the proposed adjustments, whether they are subject to the Mitigation Fee Act or not, 60 days before the new fees become effective. The fees are adjusted annually by the application of the Engineering News Record Cost Index. Most of the fees in Exhibit H, connection fees and Exhibit A, park impact fees were in effect prior to January 1, 1989, and have only been increased by the ENR 20 City Construction Cost Index. The fees subject to the act that were adopted or increased after its effective date were adopted or increased in accordance with those regulations. City staff has given 60 days' notice to the Building Industry Association for the fees covered by the Mitigation Fee Act, along with notice to local developers and engineering firms of the proposed impact fee increase. At our last meeting, members of council expressed some frustration regarding the park's impact fee amount in comparison to other agencies in the area and the corresponding effect on new community park development. Staff is legally unable to propose changes or review this fee outside of what has already been noticed as Government Code Sections 1616 requires proper noticing and making public the data justifying any proposed changes at least 14 days prior to the hearing. In addition, as previously mentioned, the city has an agreement with BIA to notify them of any fee changes at least 60 days prior to implementation. As such, at council's direction, staff will bring forward a separate scheduled matter at a meeting to be determined regarding the history of the park impact fee and possible changes of the fee outside of the 3% increase proposed that has been noticed at this time for public hearing. If approved, the new fees will take effect on September 16, 2021. That concludes staff's report and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, counsel, are there any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. And we'll open the public hearing at 7:57 PM. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward to speak on this item? And seeing none in the chamber, is there any on Zoom?
Your Honor, doesn't appear that anyone on Zoom wishes to speak.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing at 7:57 PM and bring it back to council. Are there any comments from council? I'll, I'll start with council member Stowe, since he's indicating he'd like to speak.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to make a motion that we implement the ER cost, ENR Cost Index, the automatic increase of 3%. But I also like to bring it back to talk about the park impact fees at a later date, if it's that possible. I don't know if that's legal or not, but that's my wish.
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second by the vice mayor. So are there any other, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and roll call vote.
Council member Tate? Council member Carrillo?
Aye.
Council member Stowe?
Aye.
Vice mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Rees?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. That brings us to scheduled matters. Item number nine.
Thank you, Your Honor. We, we have five scheduled matters before the council this evening. First is to consider the library needs assessment. And with that, I'll allow Mr. Moore to introduce the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, honorable mayor and members of the council. At its meeting on December 15, 2020, the city council authorized the formation of a library facility planning committee. Council member Carrillo was appointed as the council's representative to the committee, as well as authorized staff to hire a consultant to perform a library needs assessment in collaboration with the committee. While the city had consulted previously for an assessment, it had been performed in 2009 and was in need of an update. At its meeting on April 6, 2021, council authorized Penny Hummel Consulting to perform the library needs assessment. The scope of work for the consultant included data gathering and analysis, focus groups, developing and conducting surveys, and multiple meetings with city staff and the library facility planning committee. The length of the project was 16 weeks. With the council prioritizing a definitive timeline, there was strict adherence to the adopted schedule of the library needs assessment development process. The findings and recommendations are herein provided to inform and guide the city council and library facility planning committee on its next
and library facility planning committee on its next steps. Penny Hummel, along with Carson Block, who performed the technology assessment and recommendation portion of the report, will present their findings to the council virtually via Zoom tonight. Staff's recommendation is that the city council accept the library needs assessment and provide direction as to next steps in the library facility planning process. And just like to note that as part of the library facility planning committee, we do have Vice Chair Isayef on Zoom, as well as Committee Member May. And then in the audience tonight, we have Committee Members Vicky Cervantes, our city librarian, as well as Juliana Gleiden. And I hope I didn't miss anyone else on Zoom, but that concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there any questions for Mr. Moore before we begin the presentation? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Oh, hi. We're on, okay. Hello, I'm Penny Hummel, and I'm going to share my screen here, and we're going to get started. Beautiful scenic view here for a moment. Well, we are very excited to be here. I'm joined here by my colleague Carson Block, and I'm going to do a presentation for about 20 minutes. We'll do a few little breaks for questions, and then Carson's going to do a presentation focused on technology. So we're very excited to talk about our work here today. So this is our team, myself, Carson, and Carson's assistant Bonnie Nichols. I'm a library consultant based in Portland, Oregon. Carson is in Fort Collins, Colorado. This is Bonnie. And we were pleased to be selected to do this project. We were hired by the city of Porterville in March to conduct a library facility and services needs assessment. And this is the key question that we were really trying to explore, is how can the new Porterville library meet the unique and critical needs of this community? Here are some of the activities we were engaged in, and we'll kind of walk you through those. We had meetings with the Library Facility Planning Committee. Carson conducted a very extensive technology assessment. We reviewed some previous studies, looked at operations, demographics, and then we had two major areas of community engagement. I want to point out here that the scope of our work was an assessment. Later work on this project will involve citing and actually pricing the facility, but that was not under our charge. We're just trying to define what would the ideal library hold and what would be happening there. So previous studies, first thing I wanted to do was look at the Porterville 2030 plan, because there's a couple of areas of that that are very pertinent to our current work. And this is, these are some bullet points from about the community facilities. And all of them relate to the library, but I'm just going to highlight the third one, which is to achieve and maintain library services that provide adequate and accessible informational, recreational, and research materials in a variety of formats for all ages and for a culturally diverse population. So specifically for libraries, it would, the recommendation for that was to expand library facilities to achieve a standard of .5 to 1.0 square feet of library space for capita, providing up-to-date facilities. And talked about expansion options, including construction or expansion of the downtown library, adding mobile libraries to augment library services, and potentially other facilities. So then, in 2009, the city contracted with a library consulting firm called Page &amp; Morris to do a very extensive library facility assessment. And I'm just taking out the salient quote there, extensively documents the limitations of the facility, and it said it's too small to meet the community's library service needs and lacks the infrastructure to support growing service demands. You know, it cited noisiness, lack of space, poor staff areas, all kinds of things. So what this 2009 study recommended was a range square footing, 48,000 to 250 to 53,000. And this was based on an estimate at that time in 2009, that the 2030 sort of population would be 90,000. Now, what we found, looking at the data now, is that the projections are actually smaller, so that's one reason why the library that we're recommending is smaller than the one that was recommended in 2009. But it still includes all of the things that the community asks for and that are appropriate to your community and its size. I also wanted to point out that a lot has happened since 2009 that impacts public library services. Here are a couple of examples that happened in 2009. One was the advent of smartphones. We all started carrying around computers in our pockets, and it revolutionized how we use technology. Also, people started using downloadable books more and more often. So library space is impacted by both of these things, because as people bring in their own devices, they often use that these days as often or more than a desktop computer at a library. In addition, in the old days, everything was a print book. Now libraries have a combination of physical materials and downloadable things. So it was really time to take a fresh look at what the library's needs are and how they've evolved since 2009. So demographics, there's a whole section in the, my report is, I think, 51 pages long. Carson's is also quite lengthy, but we just crammed a lot of good information in there for you. So a lot of this, I'm not going to go through bit by bit. You could read the report, but we did look at demographics, comparing you to California as a whole and to the region. You have relatively young population, relatively large proportion of the community is Hispanic or Latino, and fewer foreign-born residents, but a higher number of those were born in Latin America, and a higher percentage of Porterville residents speak Spanish at home. This is 2019 data. If we look at educational indicators, you see kind of a gradation between Porterville, the region, and California in terms of educational attainment. And what this tells me as a library consultant is there's a particular opportunity in Porterville for the library in the community to play a role in supporting lifelong learning and people who are, you know, actual students from K through 12 through high school. Not through high school, through college and graduate school. So similarly, when we look at income, we see relatively low per capita income in Porterville, medium household income, and a higher percentage of children under 18 below the poverty line. And again, this really underscores the importance of the public library in the community and all the things that it can do to support people. So wanted to do a shout-out to the Library Facility Planning Committee. This wonderful group of people were appointed by you, the city council, and we want to thank them for all of their spirited and thoughtful participation in the process. It was really an incredible experience working with you all. We met six times with the committee. These are just some of the agenda items on each one. And the committee gave us very valuable feedback, speaking for the community, making sure that the assessment was, we were taking the right steps towards bringing in the right kind of input. Focus groups were a major activity of the project. We did 10 of them, actually, and 69 in total people came to the 10 focus groups. Here you can see the list of who we brought in. There's also a few in the parent group. We had one child who gave us some good input. I think he was seven or eight years old. Really, we, the appendix for the assessment has notes from all of these, but what I'm going to do is distill down the high points in a moment from the focus groups for you. And we did a community survey, both in English and in Spanish. We got over 1,700 responses, which by my calculation is almost 3% of the population. This is a really phenomenal response. And again, I want to thank the staff of the city and the library, as well as the committee, for their efforts to get the word out. I know that multiple departments distributed it. And in particular, we got a very robust response from teenagers, which is fabulous. We want to hear from them. They are the people we're building the library for, because they're going to be here and for a long time to come. So we're really happy with that piece. Social media was also really effective, and I think it really spoke to the really deep interest and excitement people have about the prospect of a new library. So what I have done with the data for the survey, and we're not going to go into this in detail, again, it's all in my report, but just to let you know how we interpreted it, is I took the data and I sliced it by age and whether or not people had children under 18 in their household, whether they spoke Spanish at home, and those were the English-speaking. There are people who took the English-speaking survey who said, yes, I speak Spanish at home, and then there are people who took the Spanish-speaking survey, and the Spanish survey. And you'll see there are differences in how people responded. For example, large print books, 46% of the people who took the Spanish survey identified that as a priority compared to 16% of the English survey takers. So this is, there's a lot of data in here for the library to use as they design services for different populations, and it was just helpful to us to do that. Carson, in a minute, is going to show another facet of the way we analyze the survey, which is looking at the comments and looking at the trends in that. So, let's see. Hold on, my... So before I get into key findings, I just want to stop for a minute and see if anyone has any questions or comments.
Counsel, are there any questions at this point in time? Okay. Okay, not yet.
Okay, we'll just keep going then, lots to cover. So we took all of the content that we had from all of these sources, and we kind of tried to boil it down into about 14 key findings. And I'm just going to walk you through these. The first is that Porterville residents really have a deep sense of their community and are proud of it. And the, you know, the unique history, culture, and geography of Porterville are really valued and celebrated. I think it's both unusual for both Carson and I to be in communities where almost everybody we're speaking to is like, I was born here, I've lived all my life here. I went to high school here, I left, I came back. There's just a deep sense of community, I don't know how else to say it. And supporting youth is really of a high value in Porterville. It came up over and over as a huge priority. There's also, again, not surprisingly, because you don't have a library, there's tremendous support for a new one. But I think that also speaks to how beloved the old library was, the memories people had of it, the things that they missed now that they don't have a library. We got a lot of comments in the survey and some in the focus groups about a desire to memorialize the firefighters who lost their lives defending the old library. And I call that out here as a finding, because I just, I wanted to make sure that the community knew that that was heard. It was important that we highlight that. People had a lot to say about what they want the new library to be. And again, really forward-thinking about what kinds of things could be going on at the new library. They want it to be inclusive of all kinds of people, everyone feeling welcome. They want it to be a space that's inspiring. It should be designed to reflect local culture. They also want it to be convenient and easy to use. There were some that, you know, a minority of community members who identified barriers to using the library, but basically, most people are, you know, are finding it relatively accessible. When we asked people about the collection and what they wanted to see, the overwhelming top choice was print books in terms of how they like to read. But we want to highlight that that doesn't mean people don't want eBooks. It's a both-and situation. They like both options. That said, if we're not talking about something to read, if we're talking about something to watch, or something to listen to, a book to listen to, people refer downloadable versions versus, say, books on CD or a DVD. And this is consistent, I think, nationally. While the collection is important to people, they also want, people in the community want all the services and features that you find in other 21st century public libraries. They want better seating, meeting rooms, makerspaces. They want everything, basically, which is good, because the library can fulfill so many needs. They want quiet spaces at the library to read, study, and gather. And, you know, I'm not sure that, whether this was called out in part because the previous library was experienced by many people as being rather noisy, but what we do know is that libraries are hubs of activities now, so, but there are also people who need places to study, to learn, to reflect. And we heard that from high school students, we heard that from college students, we heard that from older adults, whether that was a preference for study carols or individual small meeting rooms. There was a lot of interest in many types of library programming and dynamic learning These include arts and crafts programs, homework help, storytimes, help with computer skills, and computer applications. Community members asked for greater technology access and opportunities to learn for everybody. Key technology needs include Wi-Fi and Internet access, power for recharging, laptops and other mobile devices, and tech learning opportunities. We asked about makerspaces, you know, which are places people can learn and make things at the library. We asked about different kinds. Community said, yes, please. Several different kinds were popular, specifically paper crafting, interest in a high-tech maker space, and a media lab. And lastly, people want to enjoy the outside of the library as much as the inside. Again, this is a relationship to the climate, where you are, where it's warm. People want to be able to sit, some people want to be able to eat, or watch programs, or do all kinds of things. So having that expanded sense of the library as being both inside and outside in a whole kind of campus is important to people. So I'm going to just stop, go back here and ask any questions at this point or comments?
Questions or comments? Not yet.
Okay, okay. Well, Carson's going to go into some detail in some of these two, so you'll have more opportunities. So I'm going to talk now about the library program. And when I say program in this context, what I mean is it's an Excel spreadsheet that is a very detailed, line by line, what is in the library taking up square footage. So that is part of my role as the library consultant, is to define that, to understand what those needs are, and to provide an estimate of that. And the assessment has the complete program. We won't be going through that all today, but I just kind of want to walk you through how to read it, to show you, and also what are the highlights of what is in there. First off, we've got a collection in both English and Spanish, about 100,000 books and other materials. This is an increase over the previous library. Again, it's based on the interest of the community. My observation is that the staff of this library are very good at weaving the collection, keeping it current. So they're already thinking ahead to what the collection's going to be like in this new library, and it's going to be of very high quality. Increased open seating for all age groups is also in the program, including a specific quiet reading area for people. So we have one-person tables, two-person tables, in some cases, four-person tables, spread out in different areas. We've added a library cafe with seating for 12 in the entry of the library as an amenity. Many libraries are doing that quite successfully. A memorial to the firefighters. And significantly increased programming capacity. The centerpiece of that is 150-person meeting room that divides three ways, or could divide two ways, there's, you know, with the walls that are soundproofed. We've programmed that so there's a little kitchenette at the end of each one, so that there are ways you could, you know, have craft programs, or receptions, or, you know, it increases the versatility of each room. Something that we're calling a creation space, which is high-space maker space, high-tech maker space. A media lab where... maker space, a media lab where community members can create and edit audio and video, and a teaching kitchen, which is an idea that came up because we kept hearing people say, you know, we're a culinary center, we're an agricultural area. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we had a space that could address things like food insecurity, or just learning how to cook healthfully? So this could be a space for job training, or just teaching cooking skills, and it's based on a successful model from a library on the East Coast. And a lot of small meeting rooms, for quiet study, tutoring, community meetings. We've got four that are one-to-two person, and two, three-or-four person, and then one that's a 10-to-12 person. So when you think of the 150-person meeting room, which could, it really could be 350s, we've got a range of spaces for people. We've got an expanded adult learning center, which is incorporated into the library as a whole rather than being off-site, and improved work areas for staff. That is very important, that the staff have not only enough space to do their work, but an adequate break room, a staff restroom. This helps them work efficiently and effectively. All right, now we're going to talk about the program. So this is sort of a snippet of one area of the library program. It's broken out, there's public areas, adult areas, youth areas, staff areas, support areas, et cetera. But this shows the square footage for each of these kind of categories of spaces. Some of them have multiple things underneath of them, some of them only have a few. And so if you look at that first one, which is the lobby, which is 457 square feet, this is how that breaks down. There's a piece of it that's unassigned square footage, but you can see there's security gates, there's a bench, you know, display case, community information, memorial to the firefighters, if that's where you want to put it, restrooms, a drinking fountain, et cetera. So each area of the program is like that. And then, just to kind of get back to that summary level, this is what we have in adult services broken down. We have under 6,500 square feet, youth services. These are all the meeting rooms and the square footage assigned to them. These are the staff areas. We have offices with doors for three staff who have supervisory or confidential aspects to their job, and other workstations. And then outdoor areas, which I've just put in as a placeholder, that would be, you know, I think when a landscape architect is, or when you get more into the design phase, but I wanted to make sure that we included that so people knew what would be there. So all of these things add up. There are 70% of the total square footage, the other 30% is things like walls and, you know, stairwells if you have them, restrooms. So when you think of all of this as 70% of the total, what you get is 39,600 square feet as an estimate for the new library. And that is within the 0.5 to 1.0 square feet per thousand population. That is in the Porterville 2030 plan. So although I will say that I think best practice now is less about, you serve a community this size, your library should be this size, than really just looking at what are the elements that need to be in the program, and let's build the program, and then that's what it is. And that's generally the approach that I took. So any questions or comments at this point? Okay. I'll keep going. So lastly, I just want to kind of talk through the final products that you'll be receiving from us. My report is the one on the left, the Library Services and Facilities Needs Assessment. My colleague Carson's, the Technology Needs Assessment, which he'll be talking about in a minute, is the other main one. Mine also has an appendix, which has the full survey results, the focus group results, and a variety of other things in there. And we've also created a summary for the community, which is in both English and Spanish. We're putting the finishing touches on the Spanish translation. Staff is doing a wonderful job on that. But this just kind of shows you the first two pages of both of them as they are evolving. And this kind of summarizes the key findings, the process, the vision, and the components of the new library. And this is designed to make it, you know, very easy for the community to get the key elements of what is being recommended here. And lastly, I just wanted to, Carson's going to go into some of the many wonderful comments we got from the community. I just love this one, they said, get it done, we need a good library again. And I think that's a sentiment that was expressed by many, many people in the process. They're eager to have a new library, they'd like to see the process keep moving forward, process keep moving forward. And that's my presentation. So we can go on to Carson's, or if you have questions about the program in general, I am happy to answer them.
Counsel, did you want to ask questions about the first part now, or did you want to save questions till the end? Okay. We can continue for now.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, let's look at some of the data that we saw from the survey. Let me get this sharing as it should. It's always so awkward to do this via Zoom. There we go. And we're going to start with some of the open-ended survey questions. One of the really cool things about open-ended questions is it's easy to create charts and graphs from like direct questions that we ask, where people rank things or talk about their preference. Open-ended questions let people talk in their own words, and then we can go back in and find some trends from that. So we wanted to share a couple of things that we thought were just really wonderful within our open-ended questions. Question number 22, is there anything you'd like to tell us about the library that we haven't asked? Close to 500 people answered that question, and the top responses, trends, were desires for the new building, the love and the value of the library, talking about activities in the community, comments about the fire, followed by multiculturalism and diversity, and location, and then a few other topics there. Now, some of the comments, again, you've got all this stuff in the packet, and we encourage you to read everything that we shared with you, even though it's quite a lot, because it's very enlightening. For instance, for desires for the building, this idea of inside and outdoor spaces come together, making a place that's big to reflect this idea that the library is a community space, and a community gathering place. Also thinking about, these days, we need to make sure we have both noisy places in libraries, because they're quite after spaces, and these quiet spaces for reflection and getting work done. Looking at love and value of the library, just lots of the word love across many of these comments, lots of people missing the library, and really leaving a hole in people's lives. And this is something that also came through in our focus group conversations very clearly, how much the library is valued in the community. For activities, this needs to be a fun place to go as well, because it's a focal point for gathering together and doing things. It's also a place of culture, and to learn about the cultures, embrace the cultures of the Porterville community, and the valley, and so much. There are also comments about the fires as well, as we expected. A lot of people recognizing the, just the tragic loss that's happened. And we know that you live that over and over again, but this is something that spoke to Penny and I in this project, this opportunity to help with a rebirth, so to speak. Multiculturalism and diversity, basically thinking about being so inclusive, and thinking about all the cultures that make up your community, and showing in a visceral way how welcome everyone is at the library. Also, location, everybody has an idea about where they'd like it to be, that's something that you'll get to sort out later, and that'll be a lot of fun. Lifelong learning also came up as a very important topic when we were asking people what else they wanted to share. Talking about classes, career support services, and things like that. And of course, technology. We'll talk more in depth about technology right now. These are the technology recommendations that we have for the library. There were some themes, though, that came through informing these technology recommendations. The first is that all these recommendations came from our stakeholder engagements, so from our community conversations that we had with our focus groups, from the survey, with our work from the committee, and interviews with library staff as well, that was a part as well. There's tremendous community support. Your staff, your library staff is tight-knit with close connections to the community and with each other, and that's very powerful to see because that's where great programming comes from. On the nuts and bolts side, Wi-Fi and Internet access, power for recharging devices, and learning opportunities came up at the top of technology-powered needs. There's also desires for greater technology access and learning with an emphasis on digital inclusion. I don't know if you've heard that word before, but it talks about, it's a very aspirational term because we know that we need access to the Internet, we know that we need access to technology devices. Inclusion means we also have the knowledge to use these things powerfully. And the library will need additional technology resources in the future to support the plans that we're suggesting. Basic technology leadership and support on the staffing side, and assistance with management and maintenance, because the community is asking for more. And to do that, we want to make sure that we support that as best as we can. Some key findings, you might be curious. The library previously used radio frequency identification, that's a touchless way of circulating materials, you don't have to line up a barcode, radio frequencies read these, it's a very efficient system for moving physical materials around. SJVLS stands for the San Joaquin Valley Library System, and it's a consortium that the Porterville Library is a part of. It provides the ILS, the Integrated Library System, which is the electronic card catalog. It also provides robust connectivity, a 1 gigabit connection. The library is living the dream in terms of strong connectivity and excellent support from SJVLS. The library's also leveraged something called E-Rate for all applicable expenses. And E-Rate is a, it's a discount that comes from the federal government based on school lunch programs for certain technology services and connectivity. The library has already leveraged that, and we, if you had a chance to peek at the technology support, we're also talking about how to leverage that further in building a new library to make your dollars go farther. Also, the California State Library is in the midst of ARPA grants, this is the American Recovery Act, grants that are happening. One of the reasons that we wrote such a detailed technology report is there may be an opportunity to start getting some of these technology things in earlier, and especially if you've got a funding opportunity via the California State Library for those federal relief funds. And also, the partnership of the City of Porterville IT for some essential device support has been so important to the library. For staff, there's excellent leadership, and when I think of staff, I'm thinking about just the whole family of the city. So it's the library with Vicky, but also with Tony and his support throughout this entire process. There's a strong vision and continuity between everybody for community service. Support from city administration and Donnie has been extremely powerful. Donnie's been with us every step of the way, has provided such great guidance and feedback as we went. And this is a very good indicator for a strong technology support, because we need that cohesiveness. There's a resilient, positive, can-do staff, they've been a joy to work with, and voiced aspirations for technology for patrons of counting on the library as a valuable resource for their technology needs, and being a place for people to learn, to be comfortable and powerful in using technology. Aspirations for staff, very much the same, that staff are knowledgeable and comfortable enough to be, to learn and to help others learn, grow, especially with emerging technologies and things that people just need to do to improve their day-to-day lives. I'm going to go over some key technology findings, and I'll give you a cheat sheet. Again, we're going through these as quickly as possible, but we want to give you a taste for all the work that we did for our recommendations. When you're looking at the slides that look like this, the graphs that you see at the top of the slide are respondents to the English-language survey, the ones at the bottom, the Spanish survey that's on the right side. To compare those graphs, we want to be able to look at that in this way, because it's really nice to see where English speakers and Spanish speakers have the same responses versus where there's differences, and that helps us to address those differences. One thing that we, Penny and I, want to emphasize, this 3% response of the population for a library survey is phenomenal. I've been involved in two other community surveys very recently, and even with the most successful ones, and we've had some very successful ones with thousands and thousands of responses, but by percentage, half a percent, not 3%, half a percent, was considered a pretty good response. And that, so this, the voices speaking, especially in the survey, are amazing. Also, this mix, or this amount of young people, we've never seen this many young people respond to a survey, we want to thank our committee for helping with this. There was also just a great completion rate, people were able to complete the survey quickly. So just a couple of questions we wanted to go over. When thinking about books, what formats or formats do you prefer? And just by looking at the graphs, you can see that our English speakers and our Spanish speakers had a very similar response by percentage. The technology finding, of course, is that print remains the most important, but eBooks and downloadable audiobooks are strongly desired. The Porterville Public Library can expect a mixed mode going into the future, looking at different ways of having both physical and digital, with lots of space devoted to physical books, so it'll be important to have both of these things. Thinking about the new library, which of the following activities or amenities are of interest to you? We had a laundry list of those. What I wanted to point out, though, in this slide, is that most, more than half of the respondents desire technology learning opportunities and access to a business center type of technology, because you don't have options for like the print, copy, scan sort of functions that we all need these days. And so it's the stuff, the scanners and the printers and things like that, but it's also the library support from staff, and education programs and mentoring that are important to that. How important are each of the following to you? We were asking about technology devices, there's no way I know that you could read all the condensed graph here, graphs here, that's for later. Essentially, though, the takeaway here is that devices of all types are highly prized by both English and Spanish speakers, with one interesting exception. Remember, we showed you all the young people who responded to the survey? We were surprised to see that gaming technology was not desired at this point. It was not a strong desire as compared to computers and mobile devices, laptop computers and things like that. So this is one of the fun things about having a good survey, where we can get some of those answers to kind of drill down, because otherwise, we could be surprised. For Wi-Fi, we know that the BYOD, or bring your own device, and in the library, technology is important, so that would be technology devices provided by the library. Now, circulating devices outside of the library, these would be ones that go out to the community for home use. It was not ranked as important by English speakers, but it was ranked more important by Spanish speakers. So this is one of those examples where comparing the results of our English and Spanish survey are very powerful. Our recommendation is to focus on BYOD and in-house library technology, but reexamine needs for circulating mobile devices closer to the creation of a new library, especially for Spanish speakers, based on the desires that we heard in the survey. What sort of help would you like the library to provide? Everything, just about? But the top learning opportunities were the, were technology basics, just getting around, doing the basic things, but also security and safety online and using the library's online resources. So our technology recommendation has to do with training spaces, places for learning, the curriculum, and support from library staff in creating those learning things. We also had an open-ended question for technology. And this question was, what else would you like to share about your technology needs? Guess what came in at number one? Technology, learning, and practice was the first one, followed by technology people would like to see in the library, and then technology, safety, and security, and Internet, and Wi-Fi. So in terms of technology, learning, and practice, things like learning how to set up a computer, or learning how to use audio and video, and to edit those things and to share those with others. Other general comments about library technology is, I would like to be able to use my device to print, believe it or not, print, printing things is one of the hottest services that we have in the so-called paperless future. I don't think we're going to be, have a paperless future for a very long time. But also this idea about access and having programs focused on helping people learn about technology. One of those on helping people learn about technology. One of those areas that came in next was technology, safety and security because we need to learn, we want to be, feel safe online. And the more we know, the safer that we can feel. But we also need to be aware of what those dangers are as well for all age groups. Also, internet and Wi-Fi, fast and free Wi-Fi. I think there's, these days, it's, it's food, water and Wi-Fi are, are the new fundamentals of, of life for so many of us, especially during COVID. And it's so important that the library is that place to provide that for the community where we don't, where, where folks may not have access to that. Many, many other survey results in our support, our report, our, our reports, our set of reports, and I don't want to overwhelm you, but before I go into the specific technology recommendations, are there any questions or comments at this point?
Any questions from council at this point? Nope.
All right. Well, let us proceed into technology recommendations. These are beyond some of the things that we talked about that were a result of the stakeholder input. But these are kind of the aggregate, the highlights of the aggregate of, of some of these tech recommendations. The first is what I think is the hottest part of a library, which is a scalable infrastructure. That means a great internet connection, which you already have, a good data cabling and good construction that can scale. That means it can grow to meet needs as you go down the road, and power and Wi-Fi. And the reason these things are so important is because without core infrastructure in your library, you can't grow, you can't serve, you hit bottlenecks, and it just gets in the way of everything. So we want to make sure that the stuff that nobody sees is front and center. And I've provided specifications for that as well, just to make sure that that stays front of mind, that we do a good job with that. But you can see it sometimes, and this is what we see when we're not doing a great job with things like power outlets. One of my recommendations is that any place a person is asked to sit in a library, they should have ergonomic access to power, both regular power and USB power. Not like this. But people will do flips and flies, and, and I think we've all been in that situation just to recharge. We want to think about what the meeting rooms are, came through as a very, very strong desire. We want to make sure that these meeting rooms are equipped to be very flexible and very easy to use. This is an example of a meeting room, for instance, that has multiple screens on different sides of this building, different walls, so that no matter where you are in the room, you can see what's going on with the video screen. Also, make note that that furniture looks very light and easy to move. Little things like that, they make a huge difference. We also want to be able to make sure that we are helping people that have different needs. And so one powerful service, especially as we have a, a growing population of older people, is to have assisted listening and things like that. And this is an example, we, there's technologies that work with certain hearing aid devices. The library can also have devices like this to check out, for people to use during programs, et cetera. We also want to think small with our meeting rooms. We want to make sure that we've got, um, uh, meeting rooms that are small but very efficient. And I love this photograph because, again, all the furnishing's very easy to move and reset up, but there's also a huge monitor, there's a webcam, like a pro-quality webcam at the top there, and there's a whiteboard and a telephone. I mean, everything that you practically need to get going. So these specifications and ideas for this are also included. We also talked about how a place to come to the library and make things together, Makerspaces, was a very popular thing. And so we've, we're suggesting three Makerspaces. I'll talk about the two of those that have technology involved. This is the idea of the library as a place of creation and not just a place of consumption. It's a place where we can all gather together and build things together with our hands in community with other people, public health conditions allowing. Here's an example of a, a, a high-tech Maker Space. This is at the Pikes Peak Library District in Colorado Springs. What you see in, in the foreground is a very large format 3D printer. In the background, you can see all the little ones, and they're all going. But again, sturdy furnishings that you're not going to break by working on it, but those are actually lightweight. They're like aluminum. But the idea is this is a place to work, and you reconfigure it. There's storage space and things like that, and tools, and, and just, it's just very flexible and able to be used. If we want to get into even more high-tech sorts of things, we want to make sure that we, like this is a laser cutter, we want to make sure that we're doing proper venting because we could get pretty fancy for things. But you can also see here that for, for, for these devices in this picture, it's good to have this conduit to get those, those fumes and other materials out of our air that we would breathe, and vent them safely outside. The other tech-driven Makerspace is a place for audiovisual creation, and there's lots of flexibility and lots of approaches to do this. This is one that I absolutely love from the Miami Dade Libraries. This is based on the U-Media Program from Chicago aimed at teens. But this is a place for editing audio and video content. That's what you see on that back wall there. But also, this is a place for kids to record music. You can see a guitar there, and there's other instruments, keyboards. You can't see it in the picture, but there's a vocal booth in this area. There's backdrops for doing video in this room. And it's a very dynamic environment. It's something that the Porterville community has asked for, is a place to do this audio/video production. We also want to think about spaces for people and technology. Depending on your, your experience in a library, sometimes working on a, on a computer in a library can kind of be like working on a computer if you're flying on an airplane or a very tight bus where you're all cramped up and you're trying to type like that. We want to make sure we have spaces for people because we like to, to be able to collaborate together, to have some space and some opportunities to do that, as well as space for individuals who are using that, so they're not all cramped and together. Technology, children's technology, one of the trends that I think is just so wonderful that we would love to see is tech not as the center of attention in a children's area, but it's present and it's at the periphery. So it's very important for people of all ages to have access to technology. But a trend that, that I'm seeing in the projects that I'm working on is de-emphasizing tech as a shiny object, kind of putting it off to the, to the, to the side and around that, and putting physical, real-life experiences, analog experiences in people's hands. So that's something to consider as you go into the design process, what role that is for you in Porterville. Also, thinking about teens, one of the fun things about our very small but very, very thoughtful teen group is that the, the teens that talk to us wanted a place to work and to get things done. And I, I would say that most of the teen spaces that I've been seeing in my work across the country has this mix of a, a place to, you know, to chill out, to enjoy. Sometimes they have gaming. That doesn't, that wasn't a popular thing for Porterville. Sometimes they have gaming, but there's also this idea of a place to work together and to collaborate together in, in real time and in real space. And so there's a wonderful opportunity for that, as well as quiet spaces for individual or very small people. Since you have RFID, you are primed to look at wonderful ways to do patron self-service. Patron self-service does not take, you know, things away from library staff. What it is, is we live in a world where there's some people that would prefer to handle things themselves, and we have people who prefer to have assistance from somebody. So we want to make sure that the experience for both options are equally awesome. We want to make sure that, that if you do self, if you choose self-service, it works great and it's pleasant and powerful. And if you have assisted service, you have exactly the same sort of experience. In Porterville, it's so important that, that we do a good job with the business center, this idea of a place to copy, scan and print, and to produce, you know, mounds and mounds of paper. Paper is important. And just a, a focal point for that and giving some thoughtfulness to that is really good. As well as thinking around if, if, you know, we're looking at an expanded building than you've had before, looking at things like digital signage to help people find their way around the library by themselves. And you can also use this digital signage in really powerful ways to talk about library programs and opportunities that some people don't know about. One thing that we, we discover across the country is that people are really not always aware of all the things that are available, available to them already at the library. So this is one way to reinforce that message and to let people know what else they're able to do. Mobile devices inside the library is going to be important. So we would have fixed computers. We showed you the space that we have there. But also recommending that we have laptops or tablets, or maybe both, for checkout to be used in the library. And then again, for Spanish speakers, consider some circulating ones outside as well, a little bit later, to reflect the, the voices that we heard. There's also, we're, we're looking at things and objects, but what this, all the technology, all it does is support our services to people. That's the only reason that it, it exists at all in a library. And so a couple of areas that, that may hit home for you is the library is a place to promote economic development. COVID has taught us that we can live almost anywhere as long as we have access to a computer, we have a job that allows us to have a remote access, et cetera. And what a lot of people are discovering is that they're choosing high quality of life over low quality of life. And for a lot of people, that means living in a community like Porterville, just, just like the folks that we talked to over and over again because of the high value and the high community spirit. And so, having a, a, a program focus of economic development, which is not just teaching job-specific skills, but definitely includes that, or assistance in finding jobs, but also supporting small and home-based businesses, having access to, to spaces, technology, and other people, sometimes for, for collaboration at the library. The, your, the, the combination of the relationship between the, the education community and the public library in Porterville is phenomenal. It is one of the strongest that I've experienced as a library consultant. It's strong now, and we just want to just encourage even stronger connections. And, and the idea here is that when there's curriculum or there's devices that the school's doing, when, or schools are doing, when school's not in session, the, the library can support those in some way. And one, one really good way is to use some of the same sort of technology devices that have been successful at, at the K-12 schools, like the Smartboard and other, other tech that, that does that, and collaborating on some of those selections of tools so that when kids are at, at school and they come to the library, they don't have to learn something new. They already know. They can just get right to it and do stuff. Also partnering with higher ed, Porterville College and the College of the Sequoias, we had such a wonderful focus group with our education community, and there's such a strong spirit of that collaboration. So we, we, we hope that you're able to continue that. There's also the idea of new and self-directed education as a service. And so one way this manifests itself is on the adult learner, the lifelong learner. Places like Google, for instance, are not requiring people to have a college degree to work for them. They'll teach you. They have a training program. I think we're going to be seeing more and more of that. As well, we have homeschoolers and people that, that use the library for access to, to, to teaching their, their younger children as well. And so, so thinking about how the library supports that with technology devices and access is very important. As well as thinking about special populations, thinking about folks with disabilities, thinking about, um, all the cultures that Porterville serves, and what sort of technology services do they need? Sometimes it's translation services. Sometimes it's other things that are more culturally aware. And then there's the culture of new experiencing and having like a petting zoo. The idea here is to introduce new technologies as they're emerging. We don't know everything about them. We don't need to. We learn side-by-side, but we make them available for access at the library so people can learn about them. Also, thinking about new service models, the idea, the older ideas around library services is we would be across a desk from each other for our interaction, for a staff member and a, a member of the public. Another way to look at it is think about working side-by-side together and to design the environment and the technology to support side-by-side, side-by-side service between library staff and library patrons. And then finally, those things I just showed you, we wanted to give you some visuals about what, what some of the technology looks like in terms that hopefully make it come to life. But there are some additional innovation opportunities that, that I would like to close with. These are things that I, I hope you will consider as you're going into the next phase of designing a new library. The number one is connecting to agriculture tech and food security. It occurs to us that Porterville feeds the country, and there are so many opportunities to embrace the, the high-tech and the low-tech, the manual labor and the, all the technology that's growing around agriculture, and the, using this knowledge and the, the space of the library to help increase food security and nutritional knowledge. I'm not sure exactly how that looks. I just think that, that you're the place to do that in the nation. I think that, that you would be the best example of, of showing the nation how it's done and how you do it. Also, technology to connect inside and outside experiences. So many people in the focus groups talked about wanting to be able to seamlessly go from inside to outside while being at the library. And so there's, there's, you know, things like Wi-Fi, for instance, and power. Those basic things, again, they help facilitate that inside-outside experience. Also, further leveraging the community embracement of social media for the library services and web services. You have a strong involvement in social media, stronger than, than a lot of communities that we've worked with. And so I think further leveraging that and building upon those communication channels is so important. We also want to make sure we're balancing technology and technology-free zones. We need some, some no-tech zones, as well as all the tech that I'm talking about. We specifically want to celebrate and cultivate Porterville's Spanish-speaking culture in multiple ways. And again, this is innovation opportunities, not necessarily technology, through programming, through art, through services and collections, both physical and digital, but really putting a new emphasis on, on creating a welcoming environment. And while we're at it, technology and programming, possibly via ESL classes, the English as a second language classes, to serve all of your local cultures. You have a number, including Native Americans, Asian, Arabic, Syrian, and others who are there. And there's opportunities to, to look at that. And then finally, this is a little bit more nuts and bolts, but it's also something that's on all of our minds. For staff, creating back-channel communication capabilities for staff members to be able to stay connected during times of, of, of need during the, the course of a day, just being able to, to harness technology for staff to connect together even closer as, as the day goes on and needs are there. And that is the end of the slideshow. Now Penny and I would love to hear your questions or comments.
Okay, council. And I want to thank the presenters for the presentation. So now we can bring it back to council for some questions, if you have any for the presenters. Or, or comments or, or questions.
I'm going to allow for the other council members to speak or ask questions because I do have some, but I've been in all these meetings and I've had the opportunity to ask a lot of them, so.
Councilmember Tate, did you have any questions?
I was wondering about some of the, you, I'm sorry, is there something going on with this auditorium? Okay. Security, you know, people coming and going. Are there going to be any sort of devices or, or systems in place so that we, you know, like monitors so that you can watch people or see if they need assistance or, you know, basically what happened with us? How could we prevent that from reoccurring? So make sure that we have security in place, technology, security.
That's such an excellent question. The, uh, we only lightly touched upon this in the, in the program, the technology program. But I think probably the best approach is to have a, a combination of a digital means like security cameras that are monitored, not there to look at later, but security cameras that are monitored just to, just to make sure that, that staff are where places in need in there, as well as, as balancing that with a really warm and welcoming atmosphere from staff and a design that creates a lot of visibility. So I think those, those things all work together to create safer environments, and certainly something to explore during the design process as an objective.
Vice Mayor, did you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I was going through the document, which as I know is a working document. And one of the things that caught my attention, took me back to déjà vu, and that would date us, in here was as part of the library technology plan for, on construction to include, you know, it could be sewing machines, vinyl cutter, paper craft supplies, and then hand tools, power tools. That's almost like taking a class and classes that were offered before, and they're no longer in existence. So I, that caught my So, that caught my attention while I was going through the document itself. But no, I'll, as I said, I know that this is a working document that's being presented. It's probably more, I probably will have more, but that's what I'm bringing to the forefront.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Stowe, did you have any questions or comments?
I did more comment than question than, like, the vice mayor, what caught my eye was, you know, power tools and things like that. First of all, it attracted my attention because I was kind of worried about the liability at first, but I know that's what people were asking for, and we have to live for that. But the most thing that really attracted me was the number of people that participated. I was really shocked. I mean, I was pleasantly shocked, but I was, you know, I was shocked, and I thought your report was right on and very good and very easy to follow. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I had written down some comments after looking at the document, but first I wanted to just ask our staff here, how, what does it look like as far as having input from the council as this is a work in progress and a working document and having input going forward?
Well, what you have before you is accumulation of survey results, focus groups, input from the community to you and what they desire in the reconstitution of the library. And I think, and I remember as the council was providing charges to this committee and moving forward after the joint meeting with the Library and Literacy Commission was talking about, in one of the comments there, and I was like, it said 30 to 50 years, and I'd say 50 to 100 years. I call these legacy or century projects. City Hall that we're in now will soon be 100 years old, and many businesses on Main Street, we have businesses that are, buildings that are over 150 years old. So, these are legacy projects, and I appreciated the slide that showed what's changed since 2009. What's it going to look like in 2031 and how Moore's Law is changing in terms of how frequently technology expires and how soon your iPhone is outdated or other technology that you have? So, the ability to be flexible, to be, and there were several, you know, having, from the former facility, and there was the comment about power, that was one of, the council at one time had talked about doing, recognizing there were limitations in the computer lab, and it talked about expanding and doing stuff on the second story, and it presented huge challenges to being able to provide electrical power on the second story in the former library. So, talking about how this facility, based on comments that you received from in 2021, but what's that comments, how would those comments feel and look in 2051? And having a space that can be amended, that was one of the challenges of the former library site as well, is that it was landlocked, and it really wasn't suited to go upwards to a third story. So, the ability to expand a facility to meet future needs, maybe, and I did want to raise, I did actually have some questions. I've stayed, given the council's direction, I've stayed distant through this process. I've engaged Councilmember Carrillo, but I had a couple of questions if it's okay, Your Honor.
Sure, I'll save mine for the end.
Yeah, so I had a question in terms of the focus groups, in terms of kind of the poor, you know, from, as the manager, many business people in this community talk to me about this, and I was surprised that only one member of the business community participated in a focus group, which is contradictory to, that's the number one question when I present to business groups, service clubs, you know, board of realtors, you know, that's the first question, and then not to have the business community participate was surprising to me.
Well, I guess if I could respond to that, you know, we, the library used social media and contacts in the community to promote the focus groups. At a certain point, it's hard to know why some have more than others. Sometimes it's a Friday, or, I mean, and it's a weekend, I don't really know. I will say that we heard from one person, and that person, though, was a goldmine of information. And I also think there were, you know, there was overlap in different focus groups, so there were probably business people in some of the other ones that were also seniors or, so while we didn't have, you know, a large number of participants in that one, I felt we did get good input, and, you know, it's reflected in the overall plan. Ultimately, we have what we work with, that's what we had to work with.
And I know that some of the members of the business community who have talked with me about it, all filled out surveys, so you probably saw their surveys as an independent survey, so, but they may have also been speaking with regard to their business perspective in that. So, there's a little, but I was surprised that so few folks took advantage of that opportunity, at least from the business community.
Right.
I had a question regarding the regional significance, and so you talk about the size of the facility, and I don't know to what extent the San Joaquin Valley Library System, the data, this has been one of controversy, I say controversy because Porterville is unique, it is a city library in the middle of the Central Valley of California where everything is county library systems.
Right.
It and Tulare and Colinga are the only city libraries in the Central Valley, from Kern County up to Stanislaw, as far as I'm, you, so everything else is geared around county services, and it's its own taxing entity in support of that. And what had been shown through the San Joaquin Valley Library System is that the Porterville Library served the entire Central Valley disproportionately. So, even though we may be serving a population of 60,000, we were, there was 100,000 materials going out every year outside of our community, which was being funded by the city of Porterville and its residents. So, when you talk about the service area of 60,000 to a population, we actually were serving, I'd argue, millions. And its survey results, you didn't query Fresno County, who, in Visalia residents, who, given the shelf that was provided by the Porterville residents, supplied the county library systems. So, I guess that kind of gets to, I guess that's kind of a question of the needs, recognizing the focus being on Porterville, but the Porterville Library essentially served all of central California.
Well, I'd respond a couple of ways to that. Number one is it's a system, it's a shared catalog, so just as you're serving the larger area, so are all the other libraries. So, it's kind of, yeah.
No, I understand, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, and so, I run into this question a lot in doing planning because people say, well, yeah, our city is this size, but we're actually serving these people. For the purposes of, you know, when the state libraries look at service populations, they're looking at who is being taxed to support that library, because otherwise you end up counting people more than once, you know, so, or, I don't know if it's true in California, in Oregon, we have some areas that are not served by any public library tragically. Hopefully, that's not the case in California. But, yes, you're right, there is always a larger service population than there is within the city limits of a city library. I think, you know, for the purposes of planning, though, the only way I can get my arms around it is to look at what is a discrete entity that is the taxing area, which is the city population. You know, if the city, you know, chose to, you know, think about it in a broader perspective, that would certainly be an option you could take, but generally, communities, you know, focus on their own populations in their planning. So, that's the rationale for that.
Well, and that was the point that I was making, is that this, beyond just our community, this has been a regional conversation, even the trade area, you know, you spoke to economic development, the trade area here, we look at it at 115,000. So, there's a, you know, Porterville is a hub, we're an island to ourselves, serving a population, and when you talk about the unincorporated area around a number of small communities, and it's, and I would say there's a, you know, as an example, the county is looking to establish a small library in Springville, serving, I don't know, a couple thousand folks, but not seeing the bigger picture of the actual, what is the demand upon the resources that, and so in large part, then the city's filled that gap of demand of resources that's been missing out of other systems, and you just have to look at the transactional report to see that activity, as well as the city, I would say, and giving credit as well to the city of Tulare. Both those systems disproportionately sending out resources to the county library systems as opposed to those resources coming in into that.
Right, right.
You, so that was really just a, more, prior to this in combination with the new facility was just how important of a role, this is a bigger-than-a-city conversation in terms of the role that the Porterville Library has played, and as I, and from a comparison set, that also speaks to, as I talked, it's Tulare and Porterville, the only city-operated libraries, they serve a broader function than just a county library. It's a self-function, and because it's inherently city-operated, it serves a broader function than the county provides. The, you spoke about the teaching kitchen, and it's interesting because we did a needs survey from an economic development perspective about niche foods, and there's some world-renowned Stafford's chocolates, you know, here locally, wonderful, which you would, or you might know as Paramount, and they're located here or in this area, and others. And one of those questions I had, and California's done things to promote home-based cooking is what I'm, the name escapes me as what it's called, but.
Cottage Foods?
Cottage Foods?
Yeah, Cottage Foods, which still has limitations, which, there's a number, we know that, you spoke of the food insecurity, and we know that there's from a, from a business perspective, you know, jams and preserves or those sorts of folks looking to enter market, having, needing access to a commercial kitchen. So, I don't know if that was part of the consideration or not, of looking at having it at a commercial grade. We actually did a needs analysis, and that was one of the, from a local economic development perspective, having access to a commercial kitchen by appointment or reservation was a component.
I was going to, I was going to say, though, I think you're asking all the right questions because the needs assessment is really the beginning of a conversation around prioritizing, like when you're thinking about the role that Porterville plays within the ecosystem of all the San Joaquin Valley libraries who are together under that shared system. You might decide that you want more room for collections in the future as you're going through the idea, or you might say, well, yet that's plenty of room for collections. We might want to emphasize one of these areas within the things that we saw in the needs assessment and give it more priority over another thing. So, I was, I really enjoyed the thoughts that you're having here from, you know, responding to the needs assessment, because I think those are the right questions.
Yeah, I would just add that those are the right questions. What we have in the program is essentially a placeholder for the kitchen. It could be used in a variety of ways. Our expectation would be that the city and the library and the community would have further conversations in the next phases to kind of hone in more directly on what is, what are the greatest needs that you have, what would provide the most, you know, bang for the buck, basically, you know? And can you design it with flexibility so it could have multiple uses?
And some of this goes to funding. You had a funding slide, and the kitchen I described was a needs assessment or a survey that was done anticipation of applying for a federal EDA grant and looking, you know, and so, my speculation is, I know you haven't gotten into dollars and cents, I've spent a little bit of time myself just preparing for that, and I strongly believe it's going to be a combination of different funding sources brought together over time and woven together to achieve it, and so.
And partnerships, I mean, I think that's the other piece.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, the model that I used for the teaching kitchen is from the Free Library of Philadelphia, and I believe they have a full-time person who coordinates that space, all of the teaching classes and the various things that are happening. So, there's going to be a lot of conversations that you'll want to have about how can you leverage support for that, that with, you know, activating, you know, new partnerships, making current partnerships more robust, and, you know, that's, you're exactly on the right track, yeah.
And my last comment was just an observation, given the prior library to the new library. So, the community room, and I remember there's a comment in either the '09 assessment or in this assessment, talking about programming as that room in and of itself programmed 300 activities per year. Basically, it was used every day for some type of activity, and I will tell you, from a city resource size, was undersized, and was surprised, I guess, surprised to see it actually slightly smaller in this assessment. And it's just a, again, looking forward into a community that today's 60,000, hopefully, you know, will grow to that, but having, you know, having consideration of perhaps having additional square footage, I think the idea of it having, being able to be segmented and having orientation, different ways to orient for meetings, I think has a, yeah, so, that was just an observation, knowing that was one of the, I would say, operational challenges, both for the city as it used it as a facility for community outreach. Our next largest facility we're sitting in right now, which has a capacity of, I don't know, less than 100? What's the number on the back? But, so, having, you know, having that space to be able to serve.
Great.
So, in answer to the mayor's question, with all those questions that I had, the purpose of this was to accumulate the information presented to you, and, you know, here's what potential or what the community has indicated, how do you want to proceed, is it, there certainly could be elements that from your seats may not be incorporated, but what's the best way forward?
Okay, and I, so, and I appreciate you asking those questions because some of those like kind of led into where what I was thinking, and mostly because, and, I mean, it's great that we had a good response in comparison to what other surveys and things may have had, but my curiosity is for those who didn't respond, and what would get them to attend the library. So, those are, that's part of my question, but I guess some of my comments are the, and again, I guess I'll put it back to our staff, just looking for some assurance that, you know, the, because I noticed that the three suggestions that were new, the creation space, the media lab, and the teaching kitchen, all require more research and possibly studies into how that's going to work, either whether that's on our end or whether that's a consultant. So, whether those can be phased in, because what really scared me in this was the statement, get it done, that was on, there was a comment, this isn't something that just gets done, and there's a lot of information here that I've, you know, hadn't seen before. There's documents I've been presented with that are different from this, so I think I'm starting to see the full picture for the first time now, but what I don't want to happen is it to run away with a bunch of ideas that aren't given the council input as we are stakeholders in this, if not decision-makers.
Absolutely.
I think part of, some of my other comments are far more probably boring and technical and maybe just my own opinion, but. and maybe just my, my own opinion, but we had made some changes in the committee formation for the, the library assessment, and that was to remove some staff numbers and include more public members. But one of the things that caught my eye was in the methodology, where it does mention the committee and the amount of times the committee met, which was six. It also mentioned that you had met bi-weekly with two of our staff members since early 2021. And the thing that alarmed me about that is I felt that that counteracted the shifts that we had made in the numbers on the committee. Firstly, this is the first time the council's being able to address any of this information. Secondly, that the representative we've assigned to the committee has only met six times to hear, from what I view as, as input and give comments, but that two, two staff members are, as described as the leadership team, are met with bi-weekly. So there, there's some technical assurances that I'm looking for, probably from our staff, to make sure that input is given all along the way, again, without it creating a runaway train, that, that the public will grow to expect and then hear conversations and become disappointed in. So there's that, and then there's also a heavy reliance on previous studies, contrary to the futuristic-sounding name of the 2030 plan developed in 2007. I don't even know that the author of that plan works at the city anymore. So reliance on old data is really, in addition to the change in the committee, what I personally, my goal was in the suggestions, and, and, you know, luckily, the council went ahead and, and changed it with the committee, was to avoid reliance on old data. And I think that even the 2009 plan, you acknowledge things have changed, but there's still reliance on the 2009 needs assessment, and there, there was a definite paradigm shift around that time. So I, I'm just expressing this now so that hopefully there'll be time for input for some of these before it becomes some, a force that just kind of moves on its own without being able to, to have input. So those are my observations. I really appreciate the, the presentations, though. I think that it's very exciting, and I think just knowing that, you know, comparisons to some of the cities that you've mentioned where these things actually exist, that you see the possibility of that happening here, I think is very promising. But it, you can tell from some of my comments, it's, it's a little scary, too. So as we move in this direction, I just want to make sure that we're, we're taking the proper steps, because as mentioned, it, it may have to be a 100-year building, so anyway.
I wonder if I, if I could just respond, respond to your comments really briefly, which are all really, really excellent feedback. The, the reason I included this slide that said "Get it done" is not that I think people are expecting that to happen tomorrow. It was more just to reflect what we heard over and over, the eagerness of the community to have a library again. And so Carson and I do this work all over the country, but normally, we're doing it in a place where people are, there is an existing library. It may be inadequate, it may be too small, it may be falling apart. One of my clients, it's literally sinking into the ground, but there is a library. So this is a really unique situation you're in, where the library just one day, poof, it was gone. And there's grief around that. We literally had people become tearful in the focus groups, talking about what they missed about the library. So that's really fundamentally what we were, what we were trying to capture, not so much like, you know, there's a, needs to be an accelerated timeline, but just, just the, the voice of the community that we heard was very strong in that, we want our library back. We want a library. Secondly, I appreciate your comment about the bi-weekly meetings with staff in comparison to the, the time we spent with the committee. I get, you know, and the, the staff can respond to that. I guess I would just say that most of the time we were meeting in those bi-weekly meetings, it was talking about things like logistics of the focus groups. You know, it wasn't so much, "Tell us what you think about what the library should look like." That wasn't really the substance of that, because this was a project with many moving parts, much coordination. The staff really stepped up at the library with all of our translation needs, so there were a lot of logistical things flying back and forth. So that's, I just wanted to give you that information. And then thirdly, you'd mentioned a heavy reliance on previous studies, and I guess I would just, I maybe would interrogate the word "heavy." I included those in my study and in this presentation, because I think context is always important. It wouldn't be due diligence on our parts to ignore those. I wouldn't say we relied on them that heavily at all. I decide, my, my approach was to look at it with a totally fresh set of eyes. I did read the 2009 study carefully. I was trained by Kathy Page, who did that study, so I understand her methodology, but ultimately, we always start fresh. So just wanted to give you that additional information about the degree to which we relied on those, because presumably, the 2030 plan is still under operation at the city. That was my assumption. So that is why I wanted to look back and say, this is what that said, and this is how, how, what we're doing, what we're recommending relates to that. So, but thank you, thank you for your comment.
Sure, and I appreciate your clarifications. Thank you.
The irony, I guess you could say, is given, given the date that we're at, we will soon be starting, we're already now talking about the 2050 general plan.
Right, of course, of course.
So...
But, but, you know, that's partly why I think it's important to look at these things, because you're right, people come and go, and memories are short. Institutional memory often doesn't, doesn't stay in. It's like, well, what did we say we were gonna try to do back then in 2007? And here we are now, it's a while later, but many of those recommendations, I think, are still valid, you know, so.
All right. Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes, thanks. So I just wanted to thank Penny and Carson for all your work and presentations, you know, throughout the process. I also wanted to thank the committee and Donnie Moore for all his help and support. And, you know, he really did an excellent job of coordinating these meetings and packed these meetings full from, I mean, we planned to have these hour-long, but, you know, we tried to cram as much information in there as possible. And so with all that, I don't want to minimize my participation, because it was extensive. And I know it sounded like I only was there for six meetings, but from the very beginning, we were given exercises to do homework, which was outside of the meetings, several presentations, not just from the contractors, but also other entities that came in. We did a few tours of other libraries, and then just reviewing documents and comments and feedback of these presentations. And there wasn't a full, a lot of information to provide counsel, because it was always being developed and new and in progress. So, you know, what, what I think were being shown is like, was just shown to us at the very last meeting in totality at that time, and it was still being revised at that last meeting. So I wanted to mention that some of the great things, and, well, some of the things I brought up and questions I had were these results. I think the council would want to know, were, did we feel, did the, the contractors feel this was a good representation of our city's voice? And so when they expressed back, yes, 3% is great, I wanted them to make sure that was included in tonight's presentation. I wanted them to talk about the focus groups and the wide representation of those that took the survey, meaning young people, old people, you know, also meaning, oh, there's like an echo. But also, you know, Spanish speakers versus English speakers, and just, you know, the different populations. I did ask about the population versus, you know, who we serve that's not just in Porterville. Also, the square footage, it seemed towards the, I think Penny talked about that as more towards the conservative side, the 39,600 square feet, being more towards a smaller size, and asked why. We wanted to talk about things that were the ability to expand in the future, and that was something that I think would be important to the city. In, like, the city manager and our mayor has mentioned, you know, this being like a 100-year project, would we have the ability to expand, and that was gonna be important. Another thing, so just some things that I, I loved about the ideas that I thought were good for the city were the maker spaces. And I, probably in the assessment, but in numerous presentations, we saw a wide variety of maker spaces. Some maybe that don't fit our city and needs, but some that, that I feel would fill, fill those gaps back. I loved the outdoor area. I think that was, you know, when we saw the different examples, I thought that was represented in the survey results, the cafe, having that, an ability to, for people to be there and be at the, the library. And then one really cool thing was, you know, it's mentioned a lot about history and of all the different cultures and just history of the city in general, and what our city represents. One of the views that we saw of one of the libraries, when you walk in, there was this special collections room, they called it. So they had like exhibits that go through, that they interchange through time, but in that special collections room, there was like special collections of different books or documents that you can go use and research in that room. And I just thought that was a really cool aspect of when you walk in, that's the first thing, you know, one of the first things you see of one of the tours we got to see. So I felt like Donnie and the staff did a really good job of bringing us, the committee access to those different examples, you know, and just pulling from all those different examples, I think there was some really good, and I, I don't know how to convey all that, those visuals that we got to the rest of the council, but there was some really, you know, hopeful things that were shown. I think that could be very beneficial to the city, although I, I do think there are some things, you know, we would question, like the size of some of those rooms, the size of the overall, and then how would those maker spaces be built in that represent, you know, what would be used here in the city. So I think that's mostly what I had in some of, just the questions that you, so you would be aware that, you know, I asked on the last meeting as we received this presentation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think, so now, of course, the recommendation is to accept the assessment and provide direction on the next steps in the library facility planning process. Do we have any suggestions on that, or is there a motion in accordance with that recommendation? I, I did want to mention that some consideration should be placed into phasing based on what replacement scheduling and funding looks like, and, and as far as what, what was, what services were offered. But, you know, hey, it's time to bring it back to council and, and wrap up this item. So if anybody has, has a motion or direction, I think, I've, I've asked questions, and I think, at least I feel like there'll be another opportunity to discuss this, but I guess that's up to us to schedule the timeline and, and the method that that happens.
May I comment, Mayor?
Please.
First of all, I want to thank the presenters for all the abundance of information that was provided in the needs assessment, and Councilmember Carrillo's comments to have participated and to be a part of that committee and bringing this information here to the table this evening. I know that several members of the community have probably spoken to each of us separately, different members indicating how they've wanted to be a part of the growth of the library. My, my concern was, of course, to, so you build a library, but we need to have that window for the expansion of, and growth. That is a definitive, as far as I'm concerned, because you can always have a facility, but there's always growth in anything that you do. I don't know how council members feel, because what we have is a good working tool, and we probably need to look at it one more time and come back with some more, or meet with, or schedule another meeting and continue the conversation.
I was, I was going to ask if, if maybe if we had, if we had questions, as, as, it is a lot of information, and even the presentation, it, you know, and I became more enlightened to the information and even more, even, even, and I apologize if my comments didn't sound positive, but I became more receptive to the presentation as hearing it come from you, as opposed to just reading it. So as I'm starting to digest the written information, what I've heard from you, I think I will have more questions that I can formulate, that I probably couldn't articulate now, because there's, there's just so much, and they're all interrelated, that if there's a way, I don't know if, if staff has any suggestions, or whether we can email them to have them answered, or have a session where, where we address that. I know we get into the Brown Act and having a meeting if we do it specifically as a study session, but if there's a way to get these questions as they start to formulate in our minds...
Well, and it may mean more work on the behalf of the consultant. If there's something that is, that, that you feel that hasn't, you know, the comment was made, 97% of our community didn't respond, so 3% did, you know, perhaps, I don't know what, resurveying or a different survey, or, but is there, does there need to be an amendment, amended, amended work product? I mean, that can be, if, if, if the council feels that there's inadequacies or additional work that needs to be explored, that certainly can be the direction. An additional, you know, and however, whether that's administered by the council or through your committee that you established, I mean, that's for the council's deliberation.
True, and I, I wouldn't stop short of saying there were inadequacies, especially at the first, you know, presentation of, of this, but there are, there are questions that, you know, do naturally come up, so whether that means it's done at the committee's level, at a more local level, whether...
Why don't I suggest this? And I brought Julia's, you know, from a Brown Act perspective. If, if you, if council wished to submit questions, or, you know, that can be brought back at your next meeting and say, if, based on your presentation today, and I, I'm sure Penny and Carson would be happy to engage with us again, and based on those questions, and, so we can present this back to the council at your next meeting with particular questions, and, and if it's a matter of still processing and digesting it for the next two weeks, provide those back. We can bring that back as a, as a report, and then the council can say, okay, here's the, here's the questions that were raised after the presentation, what's the best way forward? Is that additional work on behalf of the consultant in an amendment to this, or to circle back or double-check this, or is it a new, you know, a different process that needs to be defined? Would that be...
Yeah, from a Brown Act perspective, the council members, council members can individually submit questions. We just, they just shouldn't be answered and then relayed to the entire council outside of a meeting. So it's fine, if we, if you want to allow for the individual council members to submit questions to be addressed, then they can be addressed, and that, and that addressing of those questions can be done at a meeting. If that makes sense.
I, I think for me, that would be, that would be helpful.
I have a question. So I wonder, would it also be a good time to discuss if we don't feel like we got the results that we need to move forward? Is it a good time that we discuss that, to see if we need additional work from the consultants? Because if 3% isn't enough, isn't enough, and we don't, because that is one of the questions I asked. I don't do community assessments like this to this extent, so I couldn't tell, is this a good representation? a good representation? But if, you know, the focus group seems smaller, do we want to expand those? Or do we want to put out the digital survey longer and ask for specific, you know, or do we want to break it down by area of the city where they're being received from? I'm not sure. But if that's something that we want to consider, since we're all here talking about it and we can, maybe that's something we should...
Well, as was stated, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of territory got covered and it's a lot to process and as the mayor said, he heard it for the first time. And so you may wish to think about it. If you, I'd be happy, if you want to send a minute to me, I'll provide a staff report and say, okay, since your presentation, here's, here's been questions, concerns, interests explored, let's, let's, at your next meeting in, in September, bring that to you and, and then maybe you can look at, you know, as the five members that are here, look at those elements and what's, maybe that's a better way to make, what's the best way forward than, you know, having been hit, I would say hit cold, hit cold with it tonight.
And I think, I think, I think that's a great step and I think that once, you know, just having this meeting and just people talking about it is bound to bring in some more opinions about what, what we've discussed and what's been presented. So I think just naturally, we may get more, not, not really official survey information come in from people, which is good because that's, that's, that's part of where my note comes from is, is looking at what we didn't hear. So I would feel comfortable and I, with, with asking questions and having those answered and, and moving forward before, and, and I think, you know, to answer council member Carrillo's question, I think if that's a, if that's something that you have a concern about, then I think feel free to submit the, the numbers for surveys or however, whichever questions you have and then we can move from there. I, I don't want to stop the process, but I wanted to just make sure that there's some checks and checkpoints there. And it sounds like there's plenty of time and if we can ask these questions, I think it would be a little easier on everyone going forward because I'd love to have something that we just are able to move forward and set free and give to the committee to just, you know, do some more work on and move forward in a positive manner.
There's another, a level of analysis that needs to happen. You asked about the staff. I know fire, you know, anytime you, and it was kind of alluded to in talking about proper, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole process as you're getting into looking at some of this. What is the city's, what is the city's own development code for things? And so as you have these different things, there's going to be, going to have to be consideration at the staff level for what are the, what is the city's own requirements upon itself for those types of activities, which is next, next level granular from...
And, and those were, you know, and again, I'm, I'm too boring and too technical. When I, when I see the ventilation, that's what I'm thinking about is the vent hood and all those, the different types of things. And of course, with the tragedy that happened, any, any introduction of something that has fire attached to it, that's not, you know, necessary, makes me a little nervous, although I know technology, I know sprinkling, I know all those things are, are part of the equation. So I guess what you're just sensing is anxiety of the, how large this project is and I, I really thank you for, for your effort and, but I think we need a, a motion to, to proceed with, well, to accept it and then, or at least that's what the recommendation is. So I, I suppose that the motion should be to, well, let me ask you this question, let me ask the city manager this question. If we accept the needs assessment as it is, does that stop us from asking for additional information or actions?
So, I mean, there was a contract that was entered into and I guess the question is have they, you know, from a deliverable standpoint, but I, already what was, so the contract that you, that was approved here was, was beneath the, the estimate that had been established to do the work. So I would say there's the ability to amend, if that's what you want to do, I guess that's the question. The contract can be amended to pursue a different, but I, I guess the council needs to give that direction. Do you want them to do it or is it a task derived by other means?
No.
I, I wouldn't make this a money issue. This is a really a question of, you know, the product that you have and, and is it, is it the information you need to make the decision to make the next step, whatever that is?
Well, I, I believe that the product we've been presented with is, is more than sufficient to, to get started with the process. I also believe that having the chance to ask questions and have them answered is sufficient enough to be able to, you know, give direction for how it goes from, from there, so...
They're not mutually exclusive options. So, so you have the ability to accept the, the needs assessment, but actually then ask for additional information.
Okay. So that, that would be, that would be my motion then is to accept the needs assessment, understanding that we'll submit questions that will be answered at a later date to clarify the amount, the information that was presented to us.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Council member Stowe, did you have any input?
No, that's a good idea. I mean, we have to realize that assessment is just the beginning of the project, so, and I think they did a good job of assessing, you know, projects, so I, you know, I think accepting it now and moving forward is the, probably the best idea that we've had most of the night, to tell you the truth.
Okay. Thank you for that. So that's, so we have a motion in a second, we'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Council member Tate?
Aye.
Council member Carrillo?
Aye.
Council member Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Riz?
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, may we take a break?
Yes, I was going to suggest that we, we take a 10-minute break and, and come back at nine, actually, we'll, we'll come back at nine, oh, it'll be 10.
It'll be 10.
It'll be 10 o'clock. It'll give us 12 minutes.
We will begin item 10.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our next scheduled matter is to consider new Porterville Rescue Mission biannual update. Mr. Reddell will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless. Honorable Mayor and City Council, at its meeting on June 18th of 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution 43-2019 approving the conditional use permit, also known as the CUP. That CUP number is 2018-041C for the new Porterville Rescue Mission. To allow for social services facilities located at 30 South A Street. As outlined in Resolution 43-2019, Condition 1, and in compliance with the Porterville Municipal Code, Chapter 21, Section 301.09, social services facilities shall provide adequate and accessible sanitary facilities, including lavatories, restrooms, and refuse containers, sufficient patron seating facilities for dining, effective screening devices such as landscaping and masonry fences in conjunction with outdoor activity areas. To meet these requirements, a new Porterville Rescue Mission was to continue work onsite improvements and stay in communication with staff until all items had been completed. The CUP includes a requirement that staff provide a biannual update to the City Council status of the project, which is a purpose of this report this evening. The last update to City Council was provided on January 19th of this year. The update included that the new Porterville Rescue Mission has been issued a permit for the structural revision to correct the issues encountered during the demolition process on November 25th of 2020. Staff met with the New Porterville Rescue Mission on January 4th to discuss the progress of the project. The New Porterville Rescue Mission informed the staff that the timeline had been impacted by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, noting that they had received a letter from one of the suppliers informing them that their delivery of their order had been delayed due to the pandemic. Framing inspection was provided by the City's Engineering Department and Building Division on January 5th, and a second framing inspection on January 8th, which the New Porterville Rescue Mission passed. The New Porterville Rescue Mission has had five inspections since the last update that was provided to Council on February the 2nd. And these occurred on April the 1st, May 18th, August 3rd, August 10th, and a final one on August 11th. The New Porterville Rescue Mission's most recent inspection was a final inspection for one of the restroom remodels, which was approved after the writing of the staff report that you've had in your packet. On August 10th, staff observed two violations of the conditions outlined in the conditional use permit, as well as Porterville Development Ordinance. A recreational vehicle was observed onsite that was being occupied as a residence with electrical extension cord connected to the recreational vehicle. Chapter 304.11 of the Development Ordinance states that parking and storing of recreational vehicles, boats, campers, trailers, and similar vehicles are prohibited from being stored for a period longer than 72 hours in their front yard setback. They may be stored in the side or rear yard behind a six-foot-high fence. At no time are recreational vehicles allowed to be occupied as residences. Connection to any combination of electrical, water, cable, or sewer facilities is considered prima facie evidence of occupation of a residence. No time shall commercial vehicles greater than one-ton rating be parked or stored on residential properties. Tents were also observed to be erected outside of the approved season and timeframe outlined in Condition 10 of the conditional use permit. Condition 10 states, "The temporary use of tents for overflow of patrons may be permitted during winter months provided that the usage and assembly of the tents may be opposite of office hours erecting tents at 7:00 p.m. and removing them prior to 7:00 a.m." The New Porterville Rescue Mission was notified on August 10th of the violations, and staff requested the violations be remedied within 72 hours. Staff met with New Porterville Rescue Mission representatives on August 11th, which the representatives noticed the violations of the CUP would be remedied within the timeframe requested. The New Porterville Rescue Mission complied with the request and remedied the violations within the 72 hours provided within the notice. The New Porterville Rescue Mission has requested a meeting with staff to take place this Thursday, the 19th. Staff's recommendation is the City Council consider the biannual report and provide any direction as deemed appropriate. Staff's available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Any comments? Sorry, sir. This is the City Council, and this is an item, and it's not time for oral communication, so... I'm sorry. I'll clarify. Are there any... I was asking the City Council. This is an item up for discussion with the City Council. Sorry if I miscommunicated. Are there any questions from council members for this item? Any comments?
It sounds as if the problem was resolved, so...
The... Yeah, I guess I'll go ahead since I'm on a roll tonight. The problem I have with the report is that the violations that had happened, that it's not technically a 72-hour window to violate something and then be caught and remedy it. It's that these are violations that should never have happened to begin with. In fact, one of them is a repeat violation, so that... What's hard is that we're being asked to continue this program of updates, which is only brought about by shortcomings in the facility. So I know it's an update, but at some point, we're going to have to find ways to not have to take two steps back each time we have this update. This process was meant to create an outcome that was good for the residents there. It's been prolonged for a multitude of reasons. So for me, I think that those violations need to be considered at some point, whether that's something that's done tonight or whether there's a threshold that's set up for something. But the conditional use permit is ours to revoke if we choose. And if... I think if this pattern comes up, I'll have no choice but to, you know, want to do that. I think that the challenges this group faces are the same every other group faces as far as building supplies. So I don't... I can't really differentiate between the hurdles here and other organizations. But, you know, that's my opinion, so I'll leave a moment for someone else to chime in. Anybody? Councilmember Stowe?
Did they have a reasoning for storing the vehicles and putting up the tents again? I mean, it's been COVID, and that's even... Uh-oh. Makes it... Did I lose you guys? Can you see me? Can you hear me? Oh, there you go. I'm sorry.
We can hear you.
Okay. I mean, that should be reason enough not to add any other violations to it. Because of COVID, you don't have that many people coming in, I would hope, you know, and just the group that's around you. But there's additional tents that have been put up. Now, I don't like that, but, you know, same time, I know they haven't done anything due to COVID, but it's going to be awfully hard for them to get things done now even after we finish with this COVID thing. And now we're having another surge of COVID. Because, you know, lumber and all kinds of things, it's just surged so high, it's just unbelievable. So if they couldn't get it done then, I really don't expect them to get it done later, you know, due to the lumber costs and everything else that, you know, has to go along with it, all the materials. It's just my thought. Maybe they can do it, you know, but I just don't... I don't foresee that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I just... Please, go ahead. Please, go ahead. I was just going to add, you know, first, and I'm trying to follow along with the timeline, that they're trying to get these revisions corrected. But also, most concerning is in the report, the tents and the recreational vehicles being plugged in during that time. And we just had a big discussion about this at a recent council meeting. You know, talking about the ordinance, about having the recreational vehicles parked in the, you know, front of homes or businesses and having that plug. I guess just to hear maybe a little bit more from council about that. That's concerning to me, even though it says it would have been corrected within the 72 hours. But that is referring to finding the tents and the vehicle plugged in?
So staff met with representatives of the Porterville Rescue Mission, as noted in the staff report, on August the 11th. And the representative mentioned that the tents were storing bedding materials, sleeping bags, pillows, and those sorts of things, as they were lacking storage onsite. And one of the locations where they had off-site storage wasn't appropriate for those bedding materials. In that conversation, I reminded her of the conditions of approval and that it needed to abide by those conditions of approval. And that the only... That the City Council was the only body that they could modify those, and so she needed to adhere to all conditions of approval, including the tents. The recreational vehicle, she had mentioned that one of the individuals that was helping with the restroom remodel was using that, and so I just reminded her of the code section and said that that was in violation of Development Ordinance and that Condition 11 of her conditional use permit outlined that not only must you follow all the conditions of a conditional use permit, but also all the conditions that are outlined in the Development Ordinance, as everybody throughout the city must abide by that Development Ordinance.
Your Honor? Your Honor?
Councilmember Stowe, I think. Councilmember Tate is going to ask a question, and I'll go to you next.
All right. I'm sorry.
So the RV was occupied. Someone was staying in it while they were working, or was that your impression?
Yes, that was the impression that I gathered, and also through our code. The way it's evaluated, that if a recreational vehicle is hooked up to any utilities, such as power or water, it is deemed to be occupied and lived in. And so it met those conditions with... We have a photo of the RV that is hooked up to electrical system with extension cords.
So this... Since this is a biannual report, the next scheduled report wouldn't be for another six months?
Unless... I mean, that's been the direction. It can be certainly at a different timeframe as defined.
Right, and so I think that there should be, for a couple of reasons, an update on the progress sooner than six months. But a real look at any future violations as a condition of... I mean, this is all conditional, so any attempt to do violate... Have violations... I mean, if we're just going to go out and call them on violations, and then they're just going to remedy it every 72 hours, that's not the system that is supposed to be in place. It's just not supposed to happen. And in fact, the tents are there out of our, you know, willingness to work with the organization. They're not even supposed to be there except for with our allowing that to happen. So I think whether it's a month or two months, it needs to happen before six months, and there needs to be some sound progress made towards the goals. Because there's too many changes happening at the level of the new rescue mission without talking to us about things that we've already made concessions for. And that's my opinion, so... And I don't know if you just need direction or if anyone else wants to chime in on that, but that would be my request.
May I?
Please.
First of all, when I look at it and I see that RV, the recreational vehicle, was with electrical, to me, I'm always concerned with the health and the safety and the welfare of the residents at the mission to that regard. I know that when I look at the conditional use permit, and we've had the conversations before and previously with regard to the building and fire codes when it was brought to us originally. So it's something that I hope that there is an established communication before something is done, so that there is a plan to remedy versus going out there and being cited, because it's happened more than once. And that's my comment to this effect. It goes back to the health and safety and the welfare of the residents and the quality of life for all who live there.
Thank you. Councilmember Stowe, did you have a...
Yes, thank you. I did. Is there anyone there that can tell us when they're going to complete this project?
Mr. Beltran is here. If you wanted to come forward, Mr. Beltran, let us know timeline.
Yes, thank you. First of all, we are making progress. You know, the facility is such that it had two bathrooms, one with shower, and the other one just had a bathroom. The... Where the dorms are at, we started on the remodel of that bathroom, and that has been completed. The second phase... We didn't want to do both of them. Obviously, we wouldn't have any bathrooms there. The second phase we just started already includes a shower. That's the one that has a shower, so it's going to be, you know, important for us to hurry up and get that done, because right now we're without showers, now that it's been demolished. So we're going to be expediting that obviously as fast as we can. So we're, we're going to be expediting that, obviously, as, as fast as we can to get that thing going. Now, again, on the tent issue, they, they were being used for storage. We have a lot of bedding and, and sleeping bags that they were storing in there, and some of the personal belongings for some of the individuals there. The, the whole construction pro, progress or process has been that some of the individuals have been displaced out of the dorms because we were doing the remodeling that particular room. Now that that is completed, we should be able to get all the dorms back into, you know, being able to put more people in there. And so now the next phase of it would be the, the, the second bathroom with the shower and all the handicap information of wheelchair ramp, which we have part of the wheelchair ramp already in. Some of the, the fencing in the back has been, been done also. Of course, one of the things was with the sprinkler system. So we're, we're progressing on it, probably not, you know, the way you like it, but, or the, at the, at the pace that you, the city council would like to. Now, on the issue of the, of the trailer, or the, yeah, the trailer, it was intended to go in it to use as a, as a construction trailer type thing, you know. So didn't realize that that was the case. Soon as we got notified it didn't need to be there, it shouldn't be there, we got it out of there pretty quick. And so, you know, that's not going to happen again. And I don't know about the tents, if you're gonna, if we were allowed to use the tents for storage, because we do, we only have a couple of small storage areas and, and we do need more storage area. So that's about it. But yeah, we're progressing on this. We're, we're moving forward on it. Again, it's not the intent for us to, to defer anything. We, we want to do this work, obviously, and, and, you know, we are, I think we're, I feel we're providing a big need for the city with homelessness, recovery. We have a lot of success stories there. And, and I would just ask for your patience on this thing. And, and you know, again, I, I think last time I did ask that we try to communicate a little bit better with, with staff to make sure that we're on task and that we're, you know, if there's any violations that we're not aware of, that, you know, it's brought to our attention before, you know, before it comes to you guys. And hopefully we take care of it and there's no, no write-ups being done on, for us. So again, communication is going to be very critical, be, you know, up to this point and beyond this, yeah. Thank you.
Your honor, does Mr. Beltran, does Mr. Beltran have any idea when the entire project's going to be completed?
Yeah, well, we're shooting to finish this whole project. Obviously, the sooner the better, but I'm, we're hoping to be able to finish it by the end of the year, this fiscal year, 2021, which would give us, what, September, September, October, November, three, four months?
Thank you.
So I think, I think it'd be appropriate to ask that we have an update in two months on, on the progress. That way, there's a, a date to shoot for, for, on the part of the Porterville New Rescue Mission for completion, as well as our ability to look at what timelines we, we've set forth and be able to stay up to, to date, while we also monitor. And, and I, you know, with the tents, the tents, technically the tents are supposed to come down at 7:00 AM, is that when it is?
In the winter months. That's also, that was a condition to allow for shelter during winter months.
So, and, and so technically, they're, they're not even at this point in time for storage, or?
If they, if they were to be used for storage, there would need to be a modification of the CUP that would allow them to be, I, I guess what's being suggested is there's ambiguity in the conditional use permit about the use of tents.
I, it seems.
Yeah, and that's why the communication's important, to, to clarify those things between us, to make sure that we're all understanding each other.
And, and I think what's, what's more significant about that is that I think on our end, the people communicating that haven't changed. It's just the, the rescue mission side has changed people without relaying to themselves the information that they're supposed to uphold on, with the agreement. So I think that, if there's anything I'd, I'd say to take back is to make sure that the side of the rescue mission is fulfilling the agreements that they've already made to us, because breaking them means a revocation of the CUP at this point. That, that's at least where I stand.
Right, right. And yeah, you know, my involvement has been from the time that, that they got the permit to construct, and so I started getting more and more involved with it. And I'm trying to, you know, help them out as much as I can to, to, to keep it going, keep it moving forward. And so again, you know, I'm, I'm, I know where they were two years ago and, and they're like way, basically what happened is, is they self-reported themselves when they came in to get permits for some certain things. They were under the radar all, for many, many, many years. They were under the radar. They wanted to bring everything, you know, up to code. And when they did that, is when everything then just came to a halt. And so now trying to remedy the years and years of what they've done in the past, and that's what we're trying to clean up at this point in time, you know.
Okay.
How long will the tents be needed for storage?
Why would the tents be needed for storage?
It was either how long or, or how long were the?
How long will the tents be needed for storage?
Well, at this point in time, again, you know, we, we have people coming and going all the time, but winter coming through, we like to have some of those on hand. The other option would be to, for us to either try to build another little storage area or, or find, again, it's, it's, it's all related to funding, to find a storage place to be able to, to rent storage and put them all in there. But sometimes people walk off the street and they need some, someplace to stay, like right now. And we try to provide that instead of letting them sleep in front of somebody's business. And, you know, we're, we're trying to help, but, but I know sometimes we hurt ourselves by doing that. I don't like to see people living in front of people's businesses or doing anything in front of people's businesses, and that's one of the issues we've had. And we try to get them off the street. They don't do drugs, they don't do anything. We, we get them tested and all that thing. So it's, it's a safe, clean place, and they're there because that's what they want. But, you know, other than sending them back out in the street and not telling them what they're going to do out there.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have one last comment. I, I think Mr. Beltran expressed the communication to the staff even, and then if the staff was going to bring it to city council to, to dialogue with you first. I, I think the best thing would be for maybe the rescue mission to continue to reach out to the staff before you do anything that might cause an issue for yourself, be, because I think that with these reports and then the violations, I think the whole thing could be pulled at some point, and then that would just be the end of that, instead of trying to get it resolved. And I would just take that responsibility, so it doesn't get to that point.
Okay. Any other comments? I, I think we gave direction, at least two, two months.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll calendar it for October 19th as an update. That'd be two months, that'd be your second meeting of October.
Okay. All right. So thank you. And that takes us to item 11, which I have a conflict on.
All right. We'll now move on to item number 11.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Next scheduled matter in order is Consider Bid Results for Thurman Avenue and Third Street Storm Drain Project. And Mr. Sanchez will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless and members of council. On August 8th, excuse me, on August 11th, staff received only one bid for the Thurman Storm Drain Project. This project consists of installing approximately 1,500 feet of storm drain pipe and manholes and trench patching. The one bid we received was from 99 Pipeline here locally at an amount of 676,708 when no sense. Our engineer's estimate of probable cost was 433,765. So the, that, that one low bid we received was 56% above engineer's estimate. It's, and once we include the 10% for construction contingency and 10% more for construction management inspections, it takes the total project cost to 812,050. It's been the city's policy to reject all bids when the bids exceed 10% of the engineer's estimate. Although the possibility exists that we could receive more favorable bids, there are no guarantees that the city would receive less costly bids, and it'll likely necessitate, necessitate an increase in the budget appropriation. And then it'll affect the nature of, of that project and the upcoming phases of the Main Street Reconstruction Project. The, the cost of material and labor at this time is a lot higher due to the economic environment present today that keeps changing at a rate that's difficult to keep up with, and thus bad past bid data does not apply. These unforeseen circumstances put the project at a higher cost than anticipated. Should the city council elect to rebid the project, staff would be able to conduct an outreach to prospective bidders to encourage bidder participation and to garner information on market issues that the city may not be aware of that prevented additional bits and middles. Funding for the project is approved in the fiscal year 21, 22 budget in the amount of 520,518 from local transportation funds. Should council choose to award this project an additional appropriation in the amount of 291,532 from LTF funds, would be required to fully fund this project. That concludes the staff report, and the recommendation is that council either reject all bids and, and direct us to re-advertise, or award the project and augment the amount of funds needed to fully fund it. And then, yeah, if you haven't, that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
I have no questions, but I do have a comment.
Please, go ahead.
You know, we're in extraordinary times at this point with, you know, due to COVID, and all material, merchandise, and, and labor are very extremely hard to get. And if we go out to bid, we may not get a bid, and especially not any cheaper than what we're getting. You know, I'd like to make a motion that we just continue with, you know, go with this bid, and so we can get this Main Street project done. And because it's our, you know, it's our main thoroughfare in our community and where all our businesses are, and whatever most of our business. And I like for it to look nice, and the more we delay it, the, you know, who knows, next year it could be even more. So, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we just go with, go with this bid and continue with the project.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second by councilmember Carrillo. No further discussion. Call for vote, please.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Flores?
Aye. Passes unanimous, four, zero. And we now call the mayor back in.
Okay, thank you. Now we can proceed to item number 12.
Thank you, your honor. Next scheduled matter in order is to consider the Tulare County Association of Governments' Government Services Agreement for Regional Early Action Planning Grant Program. Mr. Ridenhour will provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Oliver Mayor and City Council. On February 20th of 2020, the state of California issued a notice of funding availability for their early, regional early action planning grant, which is, go by the name of REAP, program to help regions and jurisdictions with planning activities that meet the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs assessment and to spur affordable housing production. A total of $18.9 million in REAP funds is available to eight San Joaquin Valley regional planning agencies for housing planning activities through 2023. Each regional planning agency is responsible through its respective board to determine the funding amounts and policies for regional housing needs allocation, planning jurisdictional grants, and other related activities. A 24-member San Joaquin Valley REAP Committee for Housing has been established to help steer this planning effort. Funds can be used for technical assistance establishing housing trust funds, arena, housing element planning, infrastructure planning, feasibility studies, staffing and consulting needs, and other uses. REAP funds cannot be used for housing construction activities, though. The Fresno County Council of Governments serves as a fiscal agent for the Tulare County Association of Governments, also known as TCAG. And TCAG serves as a regional planning agency for Tulare County. TCAG expects to receive approximately $1.6 million of fun, of grant funds under the REAP memorandum of understanding, and will use $225,000 of such funds to prepare the arena plan and provide technical assistance and regional planning coordination for the provision of housing. TCAG will sub-allocate the balance of the REAP grant to Tulare, to the county of Tulare and to each of the cities within the county, also known as the member agencies, to carry out the purposes of the grant. The city of Porterville and each member agency expected to receive a base amount of $100,000 plus an additional amount based on population. The city's current portion is estimated at $163,000. And we say estimated as, when I speak with TCAG, the number has fluctuated based on the regional, by the Fresno County Council of Governments, how the allocations have, have gone there. But currently, it's estimated that we'll receive 163,000. Staff is requesting the city council review the TCAG Services Agreement for the REAP Grant Program, which was attached, and direct staff to obtain necessary signatures to return the agreement to allow the city to receive the funds referenced above. The agreement will be effective through December 31st of 2024 unless a term is extended by, by writing. Additionally, staff is seeking direction for the use of the REAP funds. Eligible activities must be ready to housing planning and facilitate the streamlining and acceleration of housing production. Eligible activities conducted by applicants must fall under one or more of the following main categories. One, developing an improved methodology for dispute, for the distribution of the sixth cycle of regional housing needs assessment, sub-allocating funds directly to equitable jurisdictions or sub-regional entities in the form of planning grants, which we're speaking of, to accelerate housing production, provide jurisdictions and other local agencies with technical assistance, planning, temporary staffing, or consultant needs associated with updating local planning and zoning documents, expediting application processing, and other actions accelerated, to accelerate additional housing production for administrative costs related to the three main categories listed above. One possible eligible use of funds that the, the staff has to come up with is to update the city's development ordinance. In recent years, there's been various housing bills that have been passed by the state, and there was a need to incorporate those news, new changes into the city's development ordinance. Staff would bring back an item requesting the council's approval to publish a request or proposals if the council's recommendation is to move forward with updating the city's development ordinance with the REAP funds. Staff's recommendations is that the city council approve the Tulare County Association of Governments Service Agreement for early region, for regional early action planning grant program, and authorize the mayor and standing manager to execute all necessary documents and to provide direction on the eligible use of funds. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for staff?
No, I don't have any questions for staff.
Councilmember Stowe, any questions?
I have no questions, but I would like to see this money used for the city's development ordinance, you know, and get that squared away, because we're so far behind and outdated, according to staff, to bring it back to us, so we'll have it, you know, everything's up to code that we should.
Mayor, may I comment?
Vice mayor, please.
I would like to comment that, as you've heard me reporting out, that these are the funds that we have been waiting for, for such a long time, through TCAG and through the REAP Housing Committee that I serve on, and along with the Tulare County Association of Governments, and how important this is. If I'm just going to put it out there that- Um, if I'm just going to put it out there that, and make a motion that we approve the Tulare County Association of Government Services Agreement for Regional Early Action Planning Grant Program, authorize the mayor and city manager to execute all necessary documents and the direction for use of funds would be for the update of the city's development ordinance.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Tate.
Aye.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Aye.
Mayor Reyes.
Aye. Passes five, zero. And item thirteen.
Thank you, your honor. Final scheduled matter this evening is to provide your, uh, regular meeting update with regard to the COVID-nineteen, um, uh, local declaration of, uh, emergency. Um, as council's aware, uh, city council made its declaration of local emergency on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. It last reviewed and made a determination of continued emergency at its meeting of August third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Tulare County statistics as of today, August seventeenth, is that there are, have been over, it's now over fifty-two thousand, so fifty-two thousand and two confirmed cases, which is an increase since two weeks ago of August third. An increase of one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one cases in Tulare County. Within the nine-three-two-five-seven area code is now at ten thousand, five hundred and seventy-four, which is an increase of two hundred and thirty-two cases since August third. Um, there's been two additional confirmed deaths, uh, at eight hundred and fifty-five. Uh, total recoveries are now at forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven, which is a five hundred and sixty-five, um, number increase. Active cases, uh, are now at one thousand, three hundred and forty-five, which is a seven hundred and four increase over the two weeks. And then in the nine-three-two-five-seven is currently two hundred and forty-seven cases, which is a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty case increase. Vaccinations received, county continues to report the same of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. Uh, although we did see in the last two weeks significant increase in vaccinations. It had been averaging about two thousand, uh, about a thousand a week. To two thousand, it actually increased twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, um, to a total number now of administered of two hu- two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. Hospitalizations have increased, uh, now at a hundred and thirty-four with sixty-five, which is a sixty, sixty-five total increase in two weeks. With, uh, of that hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and twenty-six, um, a hundred and twenty-six are confirmed, which is sixty-two more. And then eight suspected, which is an increase of three, and eighteen of those hospitalized are in the ICU, which is an increase of twelve. Um, I've, um, C R V U will post its update tomorrow as to what it's, uh, right now it still reflects what it was last week. So there's not a current, uh, but that's the most current hospitalization in Tulare County, which it includes C R V U. Uh, P D C remains in its warm status with no regional care facility, patients being treated. Important to note, as was discussed by the ad hoc committee, uh, the beyond the blueprint, which was established and became effective June fifteenth, has a, um, has an expiration date actually of October first of, of twenty twenty-one, which the state by September first, given current conditions, is supposed to make some recommendations to any modifications to the beyond the blueprint. So, um, likely at your next meeting would be presented information that may be potential modifications being considered by the state to the beyond the blueprint, um, which essentially is a governance, business, uh, business operations and activities. Um, CDC has classified Tulare County as a high, as a county of high transmission and that was made back on August third, which indicates that there's, uh, more than a hundred cases per a hundred thousand population on a seven-day, uh, seven-day average, or over seven days. Um, I've commented previously upon the American Rescue Plan, which council, uh, with its, its nineteen-eight, nineteen point eight million dollars received of ARPA funds, had, um, identified water and sewer, broadband technology, homeless services, business assistance, especially for restaurants, vaccinations and public safety support to be its priorities. C R V Medical Center has reached out to the city, um, and about partnering in vaccinations. Um, uh, they participated with the police department in the National Night Out two weeks ago, which saw twenty-four individuals, um, were vaccinated at that event. Um, they'll be, uh, out at the KJUG, uh, summer concert series this coming Thursday, providing a shot, uh, vaccine clinic. And then they're, uh, gonna soon be doing, um, more promotion than they already are of their current, of the clinic that they're opening at their facility at Pearson and Morton. And so there's been an outreach of how, um, how the city and, and the hospital might be able to collaborate together in terms of promoting, uh, vaccines, uh, encouraging the community to seek vaccines. The state was offering a fifty-dollar gift card, is what I would say, for having received that, which they are no longer offering. So one of the considerations for council would be, would you like to do a vaccine incentive, kind of similar to that, which you could, um, tether to restaurants, uh, local restaurants, uh, in support of them and, and as folks, uh, receive vaccines, that they would be able to receive a gift card to the local restaurants, should that be something. So, uh, we really look for some direction from the council in that regard. And if that's a, a program you wish, kind of, like I said, tethers both your, your promoting vaccines in the community as well as, um, supporting local, local businesses, especially restaurants. Um, and certainly could be open to other businesses as, as directed. Um, and happy, um, happy to take direction as, uh, council sees fit on that. With the final recommendation that, uh, the council consider whether or not there continues to be conditions to, um, prompt, uh, continued local declaration of local emergency. Staff report.
Okay, thank you. And so, of course, the, considering the continuation of the declaration of local emergency, but, uh, as far as the other information that was relayed with the potential of vaccination events and incentives, does anybody have any input?
Yes, your honor, I do.
Okay.
How much do you think, you know, the, the cards, incentive cards would, uh, cost the city in the whole?
Well, that, that becomes a question of how successful are we gonna have in people in, in that incentivizing folks to, uh, to, to go through that. It could be as, as appropriated by council, so you could say, you know, you know, well, let's start this in, with, with an appropriation of five thousand dollars, let's say. Uh, and this would come from your ARPA funds. We would want to closely, um, track this because it's a, it's a, um, it's gonna be subject to audit and, and we've kind of had a little bit of experience here with, it was a foundation that was providing gift cards. It was at that time for face coverings, but, uh, we want to ensure, you know, the fund, the funds appropriated very clearly from federal ARPA funds, um, where those, where those, um, uh, funds were spent and the businesses that received them, as well as the individuals that received that specific card and that they're ensuring that they were, um, vaccinated through, in this case, being suggested through C R V U. So I, I guess, you could begin in seeing and how, how, how that might be helpful in upcoming, at least one upcoming event that you have this, even just this coming Thursday. If you wish to, and we can promote that through our social media platforms and, um, and things of that nature. And I'm sure the KJUG would be happy to also put that over on the, um, airwaves as well.
Okay. Councilmember.
I think that would be helpful. However, I was thinking, you know, a bigger prize to attract the people that like, I'm not gonna do it for fifty dollars, but, I don't know, it's just a thought.
It's just a number. If you want to make it more.
Councilmember Carrillo? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Stowe.
No, I was gonna say, you know, not necessarily more, you know, per, I mean, like a, a big pot, you know, like twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, two twenty-five hundred dollars or something, people might take a, you know, make, take a chance of that, well, I will get back, so I got a chance to win twenty-five hundred dollars or something, a couple of them. I don't know, it's just a thought. I don't know how many people that would attract either.
Councilmember Carrillo?
I was just gonna, I really like the gift card idea, especially I think that's, uh, smart to use it for local businesses. Um, I'm not sure on the amount either. I just, I, I don't know. But maybe if we put a limit to what we wanted to spend and then determine what would be a good amount. Because I, I feel like there is a large population in the middle that they're just not sure yet. Um, or, or they're waiting for more information or for it to become, um, you know, approved, FDA-approved or whatever their reasons are, but there are those, that population in the middle that's kind of, um, could be, I think, pushed a little.
So the White, the White House actually had a, had a teleconference for cities. Uh, it was sponsored through the National League of Cities, um, and they, they were doing what's called the hundred dollar. That was something National League of Cities was kind of getting behind from the, um, and it was actually hosted by the White House and they were, it was called the hundred dollar incentive, but basically, a couple of cities have done that thinking that's the number that might be enough to draw somebody out. Um, I was just trying to, and, and, and that didn't differentiate, they're trying to get people to have the first vaccine. They administer, I think Pfizer is who, I, I believe is who the hospital is using. I could be wrong about that, so I don't want to say that a hundred percent definitively, but it's a two-shot series. So there, there could be the possibility of, of getting to that hundred if you go back and get your second, a second dose, which we also now know, there's also boosters that are also now in the conversation. So, you know, it's really, it's just a number. And what, and like I said, there's, there's one example, just trying to get one vaccine and they're trying to use that as the hundred dollars is enough to get somebody on the record and being able to follow back with them to get the second.
Yeah, well, I think a hundred dollars would be better than fifty dollars. I mean, I really do. I think we, you know, you can entice people for a hundred dollars that, you know, at a local restaurant. And the fact that we'll use a local restaurant, you know, wouldn't hurt their, uh, their income any, that's for sure. They'd use it as councilwoman said.
May I comment?
Vice Mayor, please.
Okay, um, in that other campaign, which were different funds and a total different, uh, gift cards were a hundred dollars apiece and there were only ten gift cards issued to each city at a hundred dollars apiece. So if we're gonna do this, I believe that we can set the hundred dollars to use it as an incentive for them to do the business and to promote the vaccination so that they can come back and get the second one, or however it's going to be set up. I do believe we, I would support it. Knowing ahead of time now that the funds are coming from, um, and it's disclosed upfront, so. That's my only comment.
Councilmember Tate.
I would, would like to suggest that we give two different gift cards, one for the initial and then one for the follow-up so that we make sure, because getting one shot in the arm is not gonna do it. They need to complete it and do it in a timely fashion. So just maybe consider that. I don't know exactly how much dollar amount you'd wanna put to it, but you wanna have some incentive to bring them back to get their second, which is well.
Yeah, I, I agree that it should, there should be a first and a second, um, to it. Would, I, I also agree that the, the local businesses and gift certificates for local businesses is important because with this project, the investment and gift certificates gets to the businesses now. It doesn't get to them when their gift certificate is executed. And if you're in business right now, you're looking at the world around you, wondering if you're going to go back to closing down and you're thinking, um, you know, do I need to clear out my inventory? Do I need to make more food? Do I need to have, serve more people? Uh, and, and honestly, having these gift certificates for vaccinations, I think, is the right recipe for getting businesses, getting these restaurants, uh, having more, more folks in them. But I, I think that one thing to consider is, uh, some of the other businesses, and I know we've mentioned restaurants. I think I was the one that brought up restaurants, but there's some other hard-hit businesses in town. Um, and I think when we consider who these businesses are, uh, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council to decide whether it should be businesses that complied all the way through, um, last time or had violations or not, or whether it should just be restaurants. But I also think there should be consideration for, like, and, and I'm not in business anymore, so I feel comfortable saying that there should be hair salons if they want to participate, that there could be, um, gift certificates for those type of services because there's been a lapse in, in those continued services for people. And, um, you know, there's, there's nothing like, um, having a personal service to make you feel better about yourself. And so I couldn't think of a better way to have a vaccination for your own safety and then feel a little bit better. Um, so, or, or share it with someone you loved, I, I suppose, but, um, you know, that, that's my idea as far as any extensions would be to, um, personal care, people who were hit just as, as badly as the restaurants.
And I'd suggest this would be one of the things that we can provide you an update every two weeks and, and what are the, you know, what is it folks are? You know, my, my thought was providing a, a menu, you know, take your pick and be curious to see what, what people's behavior, you know, what are they inclined towards with that? And both from, you know, what are the, what restaurants would they like or what businesses would they like? And, and then provide, okay, so we've had, you know, a hundred folks take advantage of this and this is, you know, whether it was these restaurants, and, and say the restaurants. I, I think that also is gonna be part of the record-keeping of where these funds went and, and who they went to.
I, I, I think you're right and I, I, one, one question did cross my mind that as long as we're looking at, because these are auditable, these can be audited. So looking at whether investing this money in a business that's, and, and I'm, I'm not sure what the dynamics are, but if a business has received aid of some sort and, and it comes from here, just making sure that it's clear for us to use that money for that business, uh, making sure that they're not getting any, any additional, uh, problems because of it.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, please.
I think, um, another way that the businesses could be part of the whole, um, this promotion is if they were willing, you know, they wanted to be one of the businesses that we could, the gift cards could be used at. Um, they would wanna promote it with posters or flyers in their window also. So then they would be kind of supporting that also. And then maybe their customers would be more likely to wanna.
I, I can't agree with you more and, and that, that's one of the things that, whether they support it outwardly or tacitly, I think that that's just as significant. To, to be a part of the, the program tells people that it's okay to be a part of the vaccination program. So I think I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Uh, some of the, some of our businesses and restaurants, people that I've talked to, um, there's a lot of their own employees who have not been vaccinated. They're working in food service. So this may inspire them to, to want to do the same. Because that's a problem is in addition to everything else, it just compiles it. So it might give, you know, if that information's out and they know it's available, then, you know, even if it was a gift card for groceries, you know, sometimes we're, we need those things too. You know, not just a dinner out or a box of candy.
Yes, a hundred dollars would go a long way for groceries and, well, I shouldn't say that. Not anymore, not these days, but anyway, we could, you know, when they take their first shot, we can ask them where would they like it and they pick up their gift card when they get the second shot?
Well, I think those are some of the things we need to, where, with C R V U, because they're the ones that are gonna do a lot of the record-keeping, who, who, who it was and, and, you know, for our purposes.
Okay, is it?
I just, before I got, I didn't want to get ahead of the council. So this was a reach out that occurred last week, or actually the week before. It, they took immediate opportunity without an incentive to be involved with the city and saw twenty-four individuals at a kind of a, so, and I think there's the prospect of some, uh, same number of folks on, on Thursday night. So, right now, there's been nothing promoting that and so the question is about doing that. There is a ribbon cutting, like I said, of the facility. They'd like to invite the city council. And actually, we'd like to also do video vignettes with you, recognizing those that have been vaccinated and why you did and promoting that in the community from, uh, you know, why you, why, why you did and why others did as well.
Very good. You know, whatever we can do to promote it. You know, whatever we can do to promote it.
Do you feel you have enough direction to?
I heard $100, but then I heard it was either.
Was it?
Split, or is that 200 for twice? I guess that's the question.
I guess that's what we should discuss, whether.
I really don't think we should split it, just when they get their second shot, they get the $100.
Oh, so they don't get, oh, so they got to get the second one to get the 100. Okay.
Exactly. They sign up, they get their first shot, and says, hey, you get $100 for, you know, gift certificate when you get your second.
What are the, anybody else have any thoughts on that?
You know, because what good does it do to get one shot?
I have no problem with that, and to get it, get the promotion started and go with it.
I don't know. I like also, you give the first shot, you give $50, and then he gives them an incentive, like I do.
Well, we can do the 50/50.
I need them to me.
I could do what they're doing.
Yeah. This is just got more complicated because it now be on restaurants, and I need to work this here.
You know how reinforcement.
And the first one, the first one will kind of get them into the process, and so the process may have some follow-up points that encourage the second one to some degree, so, but I agree that the, of course, the incentive is in the finishing it and getting the 100, but I'm wondering if it shouldn't be split. I could go either way, really.
I can too, so, you know, it really doesn't matter to me, but I just like to encourage them to get the second shot for it. Because some of them may get the first shot, and it's like, oh, no, I don't like that, I'm not going back to get the second one there.
50/50, let's do the 50/50, 50 for the first and 50 for the second, and if they don't come back with a second, they're done.
Well, and there's nothing, so you can't change it. We can come back and say, say, you know, I don't know. Again, sorry to be kind of organic about it, but it's.
No, I.
I haven't gotten too deep in the weeds without wanting to make sure you're comfortable.
You know, I just think we'll be wasting a gift card if they'll go back and get the second one, you know, it's like, then, you know, won't do us any good. I mean, as far as preventing the virus, you got to have the second shot to help prevent it. So if we give them $50 the first time, like, okay, I got $50, but I'm not going back again, you know, we just gave away $50.
This sounds like it might be a good question for the hospital, with their experience on how the, because let's say we have this event at KJUG, then what's the guarantee of another event that they'll be at?
I, the drug was designed around two shots, which is the first, you know, I will tell you what was coming out of the National League of Cities, trying to get everybody at least to get one, at least, you know, to get them introduced into the system, because when you're doing that, you're now getting name, address, who you are, now I, now I can.
Okay.
I can kind of, I have you in the system, and I can say, here's when I need to have you come for the next one.
Okay, I understand.
So, so there's kind of that, you know, now, are you going to catch everybody? No. In fact, that, from the vaccine events that we, that was held out at the, at the, they were in large part doing Johnson &amp; Johnson, because they knew they were only going to get one shot. It's going to depend a little bit on the population. I think working, my sense is working with the hospital, that there be a sense of organization, that if they're, if they administer it, the ability to have them come back for that second shot is better than having just a random drive-through kind of opportunity.
Okay.
And I think that, that's their commitments on their side to try to make it successful.
Okay, so that could promote, the case for us to split it to two, first and then the second.
However you wish to, you know, the hospital's just happy that you're willing to even have the conversation. You know, they, at a minimum, they're just, how can we publicize this together with activities the city's doing? And this is an additional way to kind of fill a part that was having, there was some success dealing with, I've heard members of council talk about family members that had been vaccinated and got their, I didn't even know the $50 cards were out there, but that was, that was an added benefit of kind of providing some of that motivation, so. It really, I, it's whatever, we can, we can, you know, we can start out kind of informally, see what, see what the response is, and we can fine-tune it a couple of weeks from now.
That sounds, sounds good.
What we could do is basically a pilot, if you know, and then.
Did we have a motion? Or a recommendation? I can't remember.
Not yet.
Oh, okay. Oh, would you like one?
So here's, look, what, so this month kind of gives us time, because you're, this is a five Tuesday month, so the, you have some time now that would, so if somebody, for example, Thursday, they're going to have to come back and get their next shot. So if you could do, that's actually kind of an interesting thing, let's try the $100 with, on Thursday, and see what success they have of people coming back, and I can come back and say, because those folks should loop back to you, I should get early results back from them, how much are they coming back? Is there, is there a correlation factor you'd like to see, like, better than 75% coming back for second shots? I don't know, that becomes a que, that becomes a question, the incentive, does it incentivize that number to be more than whatever the number, and I don't know what number they have getting second, second back.
I would say 50% if we're lucky.
I just know that people, if they are given some kind of reinforcement, this amount of money for the first, this amount for the second, most generally helpful for people who sort of, that's the way we are.
Did I get cut off in the last talk?
Is your, is your mic on?
Oh, I thought it was.
Sorry. I was just saying that, that people, most of us are real responsive to immediate reinforcement, so if you get that card when you get the shot in their arm, and then we do a follow-up, and then they might more than likely have come back to get the next one, because they get another $50. But like I said, we could do this as a pilot, just to see how it works. John says we can flex, make it flexible, as far as the dollar amount, how much we want to set and all that, like a pilot, to see how it works and see how successful it is.
Very good, you know, but I still like the $100 incentive, you know, and we can do it, you know, and see what this, what's going to happen if we start it Thursday, you know.
Let's see where it goes from Thursday.
Yeah.
Do you want to start with 100 on Thursday?
Like to make that a motion along with the continuation of the proclamation of emergency?
Yes.
That's what I would, that's what I would hope, but I haven't heard anybody say that they would, would back that.
No, he's waiting.
I said, yeah, I'm over here, I'll make the, what Julia said, I'm going to make that motion under the proclamation of local emergency, and that we continue the proclamation of local emergency.
Do you, you wanted $100 for the first?
At $100.
To see what, if that, what that results?
I'd say go for that first.
With $100, and let's see what Thursday brings.
Without any commitments thus far for the second, second vaccine. And I'll get more information about what success levels are of second vaccine histories. I think they're still kind of working through that, too.
I put the motion there.
And I will say.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stowe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Ritz?
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Thank you for talking us through that one.
We always criticize other people for building the plane in the air, and we just had a little, little flight of our own. That was good, though, it's for a good reason.
That's a quit.
Because we're trying to build it after 11 o'clock at night.
And that brings us to oral communications. Don't see anyone in the council chamber. Is there anyone on Zoom raising their hand?
Your Honor, there is no one on Zoom who wishes to speak.
Okay. So that brings us to other matters. Councilmember Carrillo, we'll start with you.
I have none this evening.
Okay. Councilmember Stowe, other matters?
Well, just a couple. I've learned this week that, you know, grandparenting, we always see the fun side of it. This week, I get to see the working side of it, but I wouldn't trade it for anything in the world, to be honest with you. And the second thing is that tomorrow, I go get my booster shot here at CBC, here in this period, so, so then the last thing is, stay positive, test negative.
All right. Councilmember Tate?
I'm just happy to be here.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, you're looking at me. I believe Councilmember Carrillo had a birthday last week. Was it last week? I saw a birthday cake somewhere. Was it?
My birthday was last week.
That's what I thought.
Birthday.
And I just had to say that. I mean, I, because I saw this beautiful cake, but it was in a picture. Okay. And I just want to share that, and I just want to share that I attended the 2021 District Five Supervisory Redistricting Committee meeting that was held on August the 12th. It provided a lot of information. I met the commissioners that represent District Five that night, because I didn't know who they were. They had a lot of information, they had the overview, the criteria, the communities of interest, and all this information can be found on the website, and it's going to affect the boundaries for those that will be running in 2022, which I believe are Districts Four and Five. Anyway, that information can be found on their website under tools, and I will not be attending the Homeless Task Force meeting tomorrow. Claudia will be going as the alternate. It is scheduled at the same time as the Granite Hills Law and Justice Grand Opening of their Law and Justice Center, so I will be attending that. That's it.
All right.
And I don't really have anything other than keep, keep the, aside from, you know, everybody staying safe from COVID-19 and the Delta variant, keep the firefighters in your thoughts and prayers, as well as the people of Haiti. A lot of things happening in the world, so try to stay positive, and hopefully they'll all turn positive eventually. That's all I have.
And Mayor, I appreciate you bringing up the fire, because there's been changes as it's happened this evening. So we had a patrol unit that was going to relieve our other patrol unit, so they had timed out 21 days, were sent back, and a new patrol unit. So a member of that different, different city had a patrol unit as part of the strike team who had a COVID outbreak at their department, which caused the entire, to them recall their personnel. So all of our personnel got called, that strike team got pulled out because of one of the, one of the departments that were being affected by an outbreak there of COVID. But then we've sent our OES engine and four fire personnel to the Calder Fire in Eldorado County tonight. So the patrol that we sent out got recalled because of COVID in another department needing their personnel back, and then we've sent out for, to the new fire, and I will tell you, it's, it, so CalOES put out a call, I was, I haven't seen this since Paradise a couple of years, years ago now. They put out a call to city managers, beginning to ask us to begin thinking about volunteering to help, which tells me there's, there's sincere, sincere concerns that there's going to be communities really, really affect this, there, there's an ominous Paradise thing that they're concerned about, large-scale loss of, in which they are looking for city managers that might be able to come in and help, so, obviously, a lot of, a lot of activity there, and wanted to be aware of. I was remiss last meeting for not, he was very patiently in the back, but new Police Captain Manis was there, and I want to apologize, he's not here this evening, but Captain Manis was here, and I want to recognize him, I apologize for not having made his introduction. And also newly had a lieutenant promoted, Bruce Okoloff, who's been with the department for a period of time, and most recently promoted to lieutenant. The chief was trying to plan a badge-pinning, and has just said, now's not the right time to try to do something departmentally, so we've had to suspend that. We talked about that, and it's just his determination's made, and I think it's the right one, to suspend that activity until current conditions improve on that. And we can appropriately do that and recognize both our promotions and our new personnel. And, and then also want to thank Ted Williams and Amy Graybell for their diligence. The city's website has begun its, in its new recreation, still fine-tuning it, still a lot of information being ported over and corrected and updated, I guess you would say, so, just a tremendous amount of time, not only by them, but also other city staff, in its updates. So just want to thank them for that, and as we call it the soft opening, it's, it's still in migration, and it's over several day period of time that that information populates over, so. So with that, that's, thank you, Council, for your, for your time and diligence.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you to all the staff. I see your names, and I see you starting to.
They're opening up.
Opening, yeah. Thanks for being there and always being such a great support for the city here, and we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Night.
Night.
Guys, have a good evening.